Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Gore. The time is 6:35. I'm calling the meeting of the ANC to order. Thank you for coming out online tonight. Hopefully, we can get through the agenda fairly quickly while we still have storms. I know that makes some people nervous in on electronics when we have bad storms in an area. But with that said, we will get started with the call to order and I will go down to my commissioners on screen left to right, starting with Commissioner Goslin.
Hi, I'm Peter Goslin. I represent District Six, which is largely the west side of Connecticut, back to Forty Second Street between Western and Military with Peninsula to the east to Nevada. It's a pretty exciting evening. Thanks for coming out, or thanks for not coming out, but coming online.
And my name is Lisa Gore. I'm the Commissioner for ANC 34G O1, which is all of Hawthorne and portions of Barnaby Woods. Thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, hi, I'm Liz Nagy. I'm Commissioner for SMD 07, which is Military Road in South to Chevy Chase Parkway on the south, east to Nevada and west to Reno Road. And thank you for coming to this meeting. We appreciate your presence.
Commissioner Finacy?
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura Finacy. I have SMD 04, and that's roughly between Broad Branch Road on the west and Utah on the east, Western on the north, and McKinley on the south, and includes Lafayette, Pointer Park and Lafayette Elementary. Thank you.
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Carol Grunwald, SMD 03. The boundaries of 03 are Utah Avenue to the northeast, Twenty Seventh Street to the east, Broad Branch to the south and to the west, McKinley on the north, and then it jogs north and east along Nebraska where the boundary rejoins Utah Avenue. Thank you.
Commissioner Sherman?
Hi, Bruce Sherman. I represent a single-member district 02, which is north of Military, bordered on the east by Oregon, on the west by Utah, up to Tennesse, and it includes Unicorn Lane and Oregon Knolls.
And Commissioner Simmons?
Commissioner Simmons, I cover the east side of Connecticut from Legation all the way to Western, back to Broad Branch. My single-member district includes the Library and Community Center for Chevy Chase.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. And regarding meeting procedures, we'll give community members, I believe, two minutes to speak. If you have a question that you want to raise before the Commission, please use the Raise Your Hand function, which is below the React button. If you go to the middle of your screen, you should have a button at the middle bottom that says React, and right underneath that is the Raise Your Hand function. And if you raise your hand, we will take your request. And I ask that all community members be respectful. Allow one person to get their comments out prior to getting a second round of comments out, and just make sure that we're respectful of everybody's time and opinions. With that, Commissioner Nagy, you have your hand raised?
I do. Thank you. I'd like to ask that we move the item on crossing pedestrian crossings on Connecticut Avenue up to underneath... Pardon?
I'm gonna get to that. I haven't gotten to the adoption of the agenda part, because there's two community members that have their hand raised. So do you have anything on meeting procedures?
No.
Okay. John Wheeler, do you have anything on meeting procedures? Okay. Rashin Carbine, anything on meeting procedures?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, so adoption of the agendas. Commissioners, do you have changes? And I think, Commissioner Nagy, you were talking about a change to the agenda that you wanted to make. Go ahead.
I'd just like to move up the discussion on pedestrian crossings on Connecticut Avenue, because my understanding was that Christoph Wassmer was supposed to be here, and it would be helpful if he could participate in that discussion. And if he doesn't come, maybe we can put it off till next time and see what happens.
Just to note, Commissioner Nagy is referring to the discussion about the FlexiPost at Utah, Nebraska, that Christoph Wassmer will be present for. So I think you're discussing bringing the issue up to dovetail with that part of the agenda, correct?
I am.
Okay.
Where exactly do you want it?
Just right under the Utah Avenue issue, so that we can talk about them right after we discuss the Utah Avenue, Bollards, Dancions, whatever we call them these days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any Commissioner Finacy, any changes to the agenda? You're on mute.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna repurpose my time. I had some time for the Lafayette gazebo, but I think the more urgent issue right now is the field, and I also want to share some more information on capacity.
Okay. Commissioner Goslin?
Yes, this, we were just talking about this at the beginning. We will hear tonight that so much money has been raised privately for the commemorative bench on Connecticut Avenue for Brian Coombs' parents, that Brian and historic Chevy Chase DC with whom he is partnering are going to withdraw their grant request. But we apparently still have not voted to support Brian's and historic Chevy Chase's application to the Public Space Committee for permission to put the bench there, and I would just like to very quickly, it should be a two-minute issue, take care of that problem, amend the agenda to add that item.
So the memorial, it can't go under the first item, Peter? Commissioner Goslin?
Oh, sure, it can go under that. Yeah, I mean, okay, so we don't, it's on the agenda. It just turns out that it's just talking, yeah, so fine, we can handle it there. Yep, good.
Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge for Commissioners' benefit, in case you didn't see my email in the public, that on the 7:30 Department of Buildings item on the agenda, the two briefers for the Department of Buildings will be Elisa Vitale, the Deputy Zoning Administrator, and Jeff Reese, the Deputy Chief Building Official. And also for the discussion concerning the FlexiPost, again, Christoph Wasser from DDOT will be here, I understand, and also Trey Holloway from Array will be here.
Any changes to the agenda other than that? Okay. All right, Commissioners, I don't have any changes. Any other changes to the agenda, Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I move that we... Commissioner Goslin, did you?
No, no, I was gonna, I was, I was putting my hand up to approve it.
Okay, seeing none, Commissioners, I move that we accept the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, just raise your hand. Commissioner Grunwald, how do you vote?
Carol?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, seven zero, thank you, Commissioners. Seven zero zero. Okay, Mr. Wheeler, you still have your hand raised. I just wanted to see if you have anything. Right now, we're in the business portion. Do you have anything for this portion?
No, I just raised my hand when you said for people who wanted to speak in the public section, raise your hand. So that's what I did.
Okay, I just want to check. All right, adoption of meeting minutes, we have June 23rd, but I think you also have Commissioner Nagy, July 7th?
And June 30th.
Okay.
It was a busy time in the minute business.
Yep. Okay.
Do you want to take them one by one?
Yeah.
Okay, in that case, I move to adopt the June 23rd meeting minutes with leave to make technical corrections. All in favor, do I have a second? Thank you. Okay, are we voting?
Yeah, Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hands. Commissioner Grunwald, say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, seven zero for June 30th. That was the first one, right?
That was the first one. We moved into the 30th.
June 23rd was first.
23rd was first, right.
Yeah, now, so now we're on the 30th. Right? So I move to adopt the meeting minutes from June 30th with leave to make technical corrections. Do I have a second?
I have a second, but I have a discussion on that one. On the paper survey collection report where you're reporting the total count, my notes reflect Grunwald have three and Finacy, per Sherman, had four.
I would say that I got this from the transcript.
What transcript?
There's a transcript of the meeting. I got it from the transcript of the meeting.
Do you mind sharing that?
The transcript right now?
Just email it, because I just want to make sure my notes are correct.
I think your notes might not be correct. I think that's what I'm trying to say.
That's why I'm asking you to share the transcript. So if you have the transcript of that meeting that shows that vote count and my notes are incorrect, then I'm more than happy to accept that, but please share. Otherwise, my notes say the opposite.
Okay, well, I will try to find the transcript. Can we just, can I move to the other one in the meantime, or no? Do you want me to do it right now?
Well, you don't have to share the transcript right now, because you're gonna, we're gonna, as always, we leave technical corrections. That would be a technical correction if the transcript shows that. If not, and I've sent an email to the Commission where I've stated the vote count on, or the survey count on this section, wasn't corrected, so if it's not corrected in the minutes, then I'll be doing a letterhead and then my with, with my comments on this vote count for the paper surveys.
I had a comment on that. Liz, I thought you said you got the count from the transcript, but you can't, you don't, you can't find it now?
On the transcript, as we speak, Commissioner Simmons.
I was just trying to have a better understanding.
Well, you're, yes, you're wrong, though. I can find it. I'm looking at the transcript right now. I downloaded the transcript and I have the transcript. So I'd have to scroll through it to see, at the risk of keeping everybody here while I scroll through the transcript, why don't we put this to the side and we can correct it later if it's wrong?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments on June 30th?
Are we voting to adopt the June 30th minutes?
No, I think we ought to set it aside.
I thought we're gonna do it with leave to make technical corrections.
She always does it with leave to make technical corrections, so that way if we have a technical correction, we don't have to come back.
Okay.
Is that okay, Commissioner Goslin?
Fine, fine, fine.
So so to adopt the June 30th minutes with leave to make technical corrections, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioners, all those in favor, please show by raising of your hand. Seven zero. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And lastly, the meeting minutes for July 7th, I move to adopt them with leave to make technical corrections.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goslin, discussion?
Yeah, I'd ask for a slight change in the wording describing my resolution. I think I just asked that it says Commissioner Goslin presented his resolution saying that the Community Center Library Site can and should support some affordable housing. Slightly different than your wording. I think it...
What did I say?
You said Commissioner Goslin presented his resolution advocating for some affordable housing at the site with conditions. I just, I mean, the lead, I think frankly, this is the reason why I didn't get a majority. So I think making clear that that was the lead point in my resolution just puts the proper balance on it, that's all. I don't think this is controversial. I'm not, I'm not asking for anything fancy. I just, as long as that is the the crux issue, housing or no housing, I just want to be clear that I think the site can and should support some affordable housing. Fair enough?
I'd like to hear what Corinthians has to say.
Commissioner Simmons?
I just would like to add to the resident form part. I think the minutes don't capture that there were other supporters of affordable housing who did not see it as a moral imperative, so I would just like for you to add a bullet to note that as well.
What would that be?
In the...
Under D, resident form, my comment on that is that we have multiple speakers supported, it is in line with Commissioner Simmons, multiple speakers supported Commissioner Sherman's resolution. In fairness and imbalance, to create the picture that was actually stated, we need to say either both resolutions or Commissioner Sherman's and Commissioner Goslin's, because community members supported both of them. I would, I definitely would not leave it as is.
Yeah, that, that's my only point, because the minutes implies that only people who did not support housing mention that, and I just want to make sure it's reflective, because a couple of my constituents spoke up. So I'm okay with the edit that Commissioner Gore just mentioned.
Can you tell me where in, I'm looking at the July 7th meeting minutes, and where are you exactly?
Page three. Section D, resident form.
Okay, thank you.
Bullet number one.
Okay, multiple speakers supported, okay. All right, I will say that I looked over, I watched the video, and more speakers supported Commissioner Sherman's resolution than Commissioner Goslin's.
Yes, but it's not a question of more, it's a question of balance, and the community supported both. And we are not doing a count in our minutes, and we never have, of community members that support or don't support. If we're going to say that one group supported one, we should say that the other group supported the other. That's just...
You can take, I'm typing to take that bullet out altogether.
That would be fine.
Yep, happy done.
Thank you. And then on a question of Commissioner Goslin's.
Okay with that?
Be the exact language that you have in mind, and I'll talk to you about it after. Is that all right? Or do you want to just tell me my?
I want to, I want to have a, I just want to have an agreement before I vote for the minutes.
Tell me again what you want me to change it to, remembering that the minutes are in my purview.
So this is under C, Resolution Presentations One, and all I'd ask is that that first sentence read, Commissioner Goslin presented his resolution saying that the Community Center Library Site, or if you want to call it Civic Core, I cite can and should support some affordable housing. The rest of it is acceptable to me.
All right. You want the conditions taken out? Or you want to leave it in, because you did put conditions on it?
Oh, sure, with conditions, fine.
Okay. All right. So with those two changes, are we good to vote?
So you're gonna make a motion?
I'm gonna make another motion. Yes, I move to, I move to adopt the minutes as amended per our discussion here with leave to make technical corrections. Do I have a second?
Last second.
Thank you.
Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. Seven zero. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Nagy.
You're welcome.
All right, so our first item up is resident form, where we will hear from members of the community. And Mr. Wheeler, I know you had your hand up. If this is where you wanted to drop in some comments, you can go on and put your hand back up. We're gonna go with Mary Callahan first. Mary? Mary? While we're waiting for Mary to come online, Mr. Wheeler, you want to go ahead? We'll come back to Mary.
Yes, I just wanted to make an announcement about a meeting that's coming up concerning the bus transit serving Chevy Chase. I'm a member of a group, recently created grassroots groups group that we're calling Friends of Bus Chevy Chase. We're an advocacy group advocating for better bus service in Chevy Chase and in the district as a whole. On Wednesday, July 23rd, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, we're holding a Zoom meeting along with the Chevy Chase Community Association. I'm gonna put all of this in the chat, by the way. And so in the chat, there'll be information on how people can register for the Zoom meeting, how people can ask questions in advance of the meeting. There'll be a question and answer period. That's in some ways the most important part of the meeting, because lots of people have questions. So anyway, that's happening, as I said, on the Wednesday, the 23rd, 7:00 to 8:30 Zoom meeting. And there'll be more information on the list serves and social media.
Thank you. Let me try Mary Callahan again. Mary?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yeah.
I'm sorry, I apologize for having difficulty unmuting myself. This is a community service announcement. I live probably quite central to this entire neighborhood, and I want to announce to everyone that the dreaded spotted lantern fly has arrived. I've had them sticking to my screens. There's an infestation in Noma. It's here in DC. I just want everyone to recognize it's in this neighborhood, to watch out, to do what they can to eradicate them, which includes, I guess, squishing them, but to keep an eye on your yards, because they'll destroy everything, and that's it.
Ms. Callahan, I have a question for you. Can you describe what that spotted lantern fly looks like? So people in a community would actually know. It's pretty distinctive looking.
It is, I certainly can, and I think they're pretty much in the neighborhood past the nymph stage, which is a really distinctive stage when they have a lot of black covering and white dots, and you can see some red. The ones that are in my neighborhood now have another distinctive trait, which is that I think they have, one, two, three, four, I think they have six legs, for lack of a better description. I'm not a biologist. They have, they're about an inch. They have a pink backing on their wings with black spots on it, and if they open their wings, you're gonna see some red underneath the wings. I can't find them in my yard right now. They're, they're lurching on the screens. But they like blueberries, they like figs, they like zelias, apparently. Those would be places to look for them, but they're here.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. It was real important. All right, Rashin Carbine?
Yeah, Commissioner Gore, I am here on behalf of the Chevy Chase Community Association, and I thought you guys were gonna touch upon a grant application that we made, but I don't see it on the agenda.
We, so are you talking about the one with?
The Memorial Bench.
Memorial Bench?
No, no, this would be to cover part of the cost of Chevy Chase DC Day for some, some ice cream for Chevy Chase DC Day.
Well, no, that hadn't come to the ANC. I haven't seen it.
Okay, well, I'll make sure it's on the agenda for the next meeting, though.
Okay, and when, when is the funding required?
The Chevy Chase DC Day is September 20th, so if we could get it, we can even, I mean, we can get it.
Okay, we can do it. Yeah, we send it to, well, Commissioner Simmons, 3G O5, right, five, and the ANC email box, which is 3g@anc.dc.gov. And we can put it on the agenda for discussion on the 28th of July, and then take the vote the first meeting of September, and you should be covered.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Nagy, did you have something on that?
Yeah, I'm wondering why it would go to O5. I think it should go to the entire Commission, please.
No, it goes to O5, because she's the Commissioner for the Chevy Chase Community Center.
I'm also the treasurer.
It doesn't necessarily have to be at the community center. It can spill over. So can it please go to all the Commissioners?
I will send it to all Commissioners, but the point of contact is the single-member district commissioner. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rashin.
Not okay.
Well, I'm sorry, she's the Commissioner for SMD O5, and this is...
I dispute that, I dispute that it has to do solely with SMD O5.
That's not what I'm saying, Commissioner Nagy. I'm not saying that it has to solely do with her. Chevy Chase Day is for everybody, just like Lafayette is for everybody. Maree Field is gonna be for everybody, but this project is in her single-member district, and she's the point of contact on grants that originate within her district. I mean, you can, you can dispute it, or you can go to Office of ANC or OAG for legal opinion. That's just, that's, that's the way it is. I'm sorry.
This is getting out of hand.
Okay, we don't have to discuss this here. I want to move on with the agenda. Any other community members have any discussion items? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to updates from either the mayor's staff or council member staff. Do we have any mokers online? Please raise your hand. Anyone from the Ward Three or Four Councilmember's office, please raise your hand. Hi, William.
Hello, Commissioners. Hello, everyone. My name is William Owen Cox. I am the Ward Three Liaison for the Mayor's Office of Community Relations and Services. The announcement that I have is that my manager and I will be having our office hours. Let me just pull up exactly when they are. It will be this Friday from 3:30 PM to 5:00 PM at the Tenley Town, Friendship Tenley Library. So if you have any concerns and want to come in to speak with us directly, please feel free, and we'd love to have you. Otherwise, that's it for me. If anyone's going home after this, drive carefully in the rain. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Nagy?
Just quickly, Owen, till 5:00 or 5:30?
Till 5:00, 3:30 to 5:00 PM.
3:30 to 5:00, thank you.
Any other mokers on the line, any councilmember's office? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our first item on the agenda, which is Commissioner Goslin, discussion and possible vote on the Historic Chevy Chase DC Memorial Bench Grant Application, and...
Could you elevate Charles Cadwell?
Yeah.
Line.
Chaz, raise, there you go. Okay.
And Chaz, just to update you, we did amend the agenda to take up the issue of ANC support for Brian and historic Chevy Chases.
for um, Brian and Historic Chevy Chase's application to the Public Space Committee. So we will do that, but you ought to give your report first about the generosity of our neighbors.
Sure, I, I confess, Peter, thank you first of all, commissioners, for listening to me here this evening. I thought that you had voted to support the public space permit at your last meeting. Am I mistaken in that?
Well, I, we may, we may have, but um, but it, we don't see it in the minute, so um, I think to, just to nail it right down, um, we might, I'd, I'd ask that we vote again. Uh, so um, uh, in any case, that is.
Let me, let me update you on where we are.
Yeah.
Um, just several things have happened since um, your July seventh meeting. Um, first of all, we submitted a public space permit application that's been taken up for processing, and the woman handling it has emailed me this afternoon asking me to ask you to vote on this, vote to support this in tonight's meeting. Um, and they've set the application for a hearing on August twenty-eighth. So they're, um, they've found our paperwork to be in order and sufficient to proceed. Um, it doesn't mean they're gonna approve it until they approve it, but that's where it is. Um, following the um, discussion and the support from your group um, two weeks ago, um, our fundraising um, accelerated, and so we have raised enough money um, to do the whole project now. We're a hundred and sixty dollars short, and I'm sure we can raise that. So I, I emailed the commission on July ninth um, to withdraw our application for a grant. Um, and I'm very much appreciating the community support. We got um, two A N C commissioners and three H C C D C board members, but um, another thirty or forty members of the neighborhood. So um, thank you very much for the platform that helped us get that done. Um, if the public, if the D D O T approves the public space permit, um, then we have to, then we will order the bench, and it takes ten weeks from then for the bench to be delivered. So if they approve it on August twenty-eighth, and ten weeks from then is gonna be into October, uh, before we can even think about installing it, but um, I know we discussed two weeks ago the idea of having some sort of a ceremony or unveiling. Um, and so I wanted to, I'm, I'm worried about um, scheduling that in a way that um, is not yet freezing cold weather, but also um, enough notice so people can attend if they choose. But mainly, I wanted to thank everyone for support on this and the, the unanimity among you.
Great. Um, a rare thing. Um, so can I propose uh, that um, just to be safe, uh, we again vote to support the application by, I guess it's probably just Chevy Chase D C.
Um, yeah, no, we're filing the permit.
Historic Chevy Chase D C for a public space permit to locate a memorial bench in the names of um, uh, the Coombs parents. Um, I can't read Kenny Coombs and his.
Dennis and Carolyn.
And Carolyn, the late Kenny and Carolyn Coombs, uh, in front of the Avalon. Um, uh, do I have a second?
A second.
Good. Um, do we, uh, do we need to discuss this, so we could just, uh, we could just vote? We may well have voted before. I mean, I don't know, but uh, just to be.
Commissioners? Oh, okay, no. So commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. Seven zeros, Peter.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chad. All right, thank you, Commissioner Goslin. Okay, Commissioner Finacy, you're up next on the um, notice of intent on the curb extension.
Okay, great. Um, uh, at Thirty-second Place, which is a very um, short block uh, between Tennyson and uh, Stuyvesant in my district. Um, the D dot proposed a um, sidewalk on the west side running north and south to be completed as part of their sidewalk gap program. Um, this uh, sidewalk was very much embraced by most of the residents from, I guess, the, maybe the bottom two-thirds of the block, but in kind of a glitch that is a cautionary tale for all of us, the person whose property was at that northbound stretch of that sidewalk, um, because that person's residence was technically on Tennyson Street and not Thirty-second Place, um, that resident was not looped in in the initial proceedings, and that occurred before I became commissioner. So it was um, it was a bit of a delay while we could figure out something that could work for that person who was not in the initial discussions. Um, there were, there are two um, very large heritage trees on that person's property that are also close to the house, and as we saw a couple of weeks ago during the uh, big storm where we lost about a hundred and sixty trees in our area, the threat of damage in storms is real, um, and the resident was very concerned about possible damage to those trees if uh, sidewalk work were done. So D dot had first um, proposed a sidewalk all the way up with uh, flexi paving on areas near the roots. That's the stuff that kind of looks like asphalt, it's a little, will be a little permeable. They went back to the drawing board and then proposed a bump out where the sidewalk would basically veer towards the road, and then the, a, a small, like, five-foot-wide section of the roadbed would be taken out and the sidewalk put there. It would remove some parking, but the residents there and also then adjoining um, Lisa's, Lisa Gore's block, uh, because they park there, but it's on the border of an A N C. They were concerned about the loss of parking, so we met with D dot and they want, and then so we have a possible um, suggestion from the resident there at the northbound, of the northern part of the block. Is this making sense before I tell you what the resident would like to propose?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, so what the resident would like to propose at the northbound part is that no sidewalk at all be installed right now, but they continue to monitor the trees. They do have a private arborist whom they have retained to check the trees every year. Um, and once the trees are uh, no longer healthy, because they're kind of at the apex of their vigor right now, they're not continuing to grow, then at that point, when it's time for the trees to go, they would like to have irregular um, concretes I will put in, but they would like to not have either the flexi or the bump out to start with. Um, and that's their first choice. Um, if that is not possible, then they would prefer to go with the bump out option. So do you guys have any questions? And Lisa has also been intimately involved with this discussion and can probably answer questions as well if you.
Oh, what, uh, I guess my question is, what are you asking of the commission?
Um, I think we just need to um, either let D dot know that we support the constituent's request um, or that we are going to defer to their judgment. The constituent would very much like us to support her request, which is, you know, first choice being no sidewalk now, but then concrete once the trees are no longer vigorous, the second choice being the bump out.
So, um, I'll just add to that. Um, thank you, first of all, Commissioner Finacy, for the work you've done on this. Um, Commissioner Finacy has done a lot of interaction with the residents over there, and the homeowner, you know, has stated it's not that they oppose a sidewalk, but um, if you saw her property or the family's property, there are two really, really large heritage trees along the front. The one that she's probably most concerned with is really, really close to um, the front facade of the house. And Laura, you can kind of tell me, I don't know if she's got twenty feet, thirty feet. That tree is like really close. Um, and it, and she is extremely fearful of anything that's gonna worsen the risk for them for having that tree fall because her son's bedroom is facing the front side of that tree. So like, if it fell into the property, it's going through her son's room. Um, so she did, um, the family did contact, as Commissioner Finacy said, an independent arborist to get their opinion, and their opinion was different than um, D dot's, and they said that, you know, that root zone that extends to the curb is all critical root zone, and that either um, option is not gonna be a good option for the tree. And so they're coming from a, a place of, you know, very serious concern, um, and given the fact that we've had a hundred and sixty trees fall down just within this period. They also had another large, um, I don't know if it was heritage, but another large tree that has already fallen on the property um, some time ago. So um, they have lost big trees on their property already. And I think it's a reasonable request um, to ask for their property to be exempted. Um, I don't know if it'll be granted, but I do think the A N C could make that request for them and let D dot, you know, make its own independent opinion, but this way we would at least get um, a sidewalk going up until that point and um, then have, you know, D dot make the assessment on whether or not they want to exempt her property. But I think it's reasonable. There's a lot of fear there, and that, you know, it's not like some of our yards, especially in the Hawthorne area, where some of our trees are at the far back end of our properties and they extend a bit. That tree is right up on their house.
And it's also about three houses down from the um, spectacular event during that last storm where the tree hit the power line at Tennyson and exploded and actually melted the asphalt.
Yeah, it's right there, yeah. Let me go to Commissioner Brunwald and Goslin, and then we have a community member with their hand up.
Yes, Laura, I just would like to say I uh, support the resident and their trees one hundred percent. So you've got my vote.
She would be very happy to hear you say, thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, I wanna, first of all, my sympathies are with the um, the homeowner. I have two heritage trees uh, I, uh, on my side of Chevy Chase Parkway, and then a sidewalk that comes halfway up the block, and then, thank the Lord, stops short, and both those trees would have to go if they're gonna put in a sidewalk. One of the things that makes me feel comfortable in at least not advocating for a sidewalk is that there is a very new sidewalk that we've got only a few years ago on the other side of the street uh, uh, up and down the entire block. Just confirm for me, there is a sidewalk that runs the distance of this block on the other side from where we're talking about putting a.
No, there is not. There are incomplete sidewalks on both sides of the block. And I had actually asked D dot if they would be willing to go across from this person's property, kind of do the bottom two-thirds on the west side and the top third on the east side, because there's very little traffic, and I usually walk my dog right down the middle of the street when I'm on that route because there is no sidewalk. Um, but they weren't willing to do that because of the um, necessity then for getting A D A compliant crosswalks, and that would take out twenty feet to park in on either side, and it was a nonstarter.
Okay, can I then just suggest, um, we're, for most of the commissioners, this is a, this is our first presentation on this. I understand this issue has been around for some time predating you, Laura. Um, do, do we have to take it up? I mean, I, I guess I feel like the, the neighbors who want the sidewalk should have some say here, uh, and I, I, I don't know whether they're on tonight, but I would like to hear from them. A, as I say, I completely understand the dilemma that, that uh, this homeowner faces. Uh, I faced something like it, but I've managed, working with my neighbors, to come up with something that allows people to pass down the street safely, just not on my side, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, they, they would prefer a full sidewalk. I will say that their kids would be able to get to and from school safely with a partial sidewalk because the person's, the resident's home with the trees is north of them, and the school is south of them.
Are you gonna?
Sorry, Mr. Wheeler, did you want to talk about this?
Uh, yes, um, I, I assume you know that there's a, a D C law, actually, Mary Chee, who um, caused this law to be in effect. Before the, it was a law, it was D C policy that whenever a road was being redone, sidewalks would be put in on both sides unless there was some obvious reason why it could not be done, like you wouldn't put a sidewalk in the um, uh, along three ninety-five in southwest Washington. Um, but um, I also will say that in retirement, I have become a certified arborist, and I have seen many trees very with, with sidewalks very close to them. This um, porous pavement that they're talking about works very, very well with trees that are very close. Like, it, it would have an insignificant amount of impact, I'm sure, on these trees. And, and D dot has many, many arborists on its staff. I, I think I would rely upon what they have to say about that, and your neighbor who is saying what an arborist uh, told her or him. Um, and, and it's just interesting to see how you're reacting. You're just reacting from an emotional standpoint without really any um, scientific uh, knowledge of, of, of what's being proposed. The D dot is either gonna put a, a, a porous pavement sidewalk there or a bump out. Um, and um, you know, I guess you could make a recommendation on one of those, but uh, you, you need to be specific.
Um, yes, the urban forester did talk about the plexi pavement and um, and how they actually can build up over the roots because there's a slope from the trees down to the sidewalk, and it would be building up. It wouldn't be soil because that compacts. They would use mulch and different things, and he felt it would not have much of an effect, but the constituents, um, independent arborists, uh, she said, reported differently. So we did hear from D dot. She, she heard both options. She talked to the arborist uh, from D dot, the urban forester as well. So I just, I, really, we just need to respond. It's a notice of intent from D dot. So, you know, one choice we have is to do nothing, but I think um, the constituent would prefer that the, that the A N C um, support her position. But, you know, we do have other constituents southwards who would prefer a full sidewalk.
Well, is somebody gonna make a proposal on this? I mean, I, I'm.
Commissioner Finacy, you wanna put a motion on the floor?
Um, I'm, I've been, you know, it's interesting. I've been trying to think about how I would phrase this. We, we could phrase it so that we want to support the constituents' preference to have no work done until such time as the trees are certified, you know, in need of help, at which time that would be concrete. We could support a bump out, or we could support D dot's um, just defer to D dot.
Um, what, just a point of clarification, Commissioner Finacy. I think, I thought her proposal was that her property be exempt from the sidewalk being in front of her property. So not that no work be done, but that her property be exempt.
Yeah, you are correct. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could somebody clarify what that means? I mean.
That it would stop at her, basically, her property line. So there's some, there's a whole slew of sidewalk prior to getting to her property, which is the last property on that corner. So she is saying, do the work up until her property line, because those tree roots extend basically throughout her property line to the curb. Um, and she's asking for an exemption from her property. And I, you know, I just, I support it. I've been up there with Laura, um, talked to the neighbors several times. My S M D neighbors on that side of Tennessee do not want the curb cut, so I have conflict with my constituents on that. I think it's a fair option. Um, wouldn't be a, like, a, a ton of sidewalk. That would be a gap. We already got a gap. It's not a perfect solution, and again, this would be D dot's decision whether they want to exempt her property or not. Um, but just given the situation, we all, you know, a lot of us that are homeowners in this area have these big trees. Her, her property is unique in the way that tree sits, and I, it would give anybody the heebie-jeebies, especially if it's your, your child's room right in front. Um, and her arborist, and you know, just for your um, knowledge, Mr. Wheeler, we spent probably an hour on the site talking with D dot and all their staff, um, their arborists, and um, from my understanding, um, her arborist and D dot also spoke. So there's been a lot of. um her arborists and D dot also spoke. So there's been a lot of communication on this and um there's some disagreement and I I definitely wanna err on the side of caution when it comes to something like this that could be really potentially devastating if that tree was to come down on that property as a result of some manipulation of the the curb. Um let me go to Commissioner Brunwald then Simmons.
Yeah, um because uh Laura, you said the the tree is on a property that and the property is the the last house on the block. So I don't see why we can't protect these trees and save save these trees and prevent them from falling on the house and keep the trees longer. I don't see why there's any reason why we should risk those trees. I don't think that it's a big problem to have a sidewalk stop a little short of the end of the street. And I'm sure the neighbors would likely understand that. So you've got my support for for that.
Okay. Um is there any other commissioner who would like to speak?
Yes, my hand is up.
I'm sorry.
I just had it. So are they gonna do the sidewalk across from or just that one side? Are they gonna do the sidewalk on both sides?
I mean, I think with a sidewalk gap program eventually, yes, but because um there there's not really, uh it seems that it's not on their top priority at the moment. They did mention, however, and this is something that I think we can all take under advisement. They said, oh, a couple of years ago, the A and C put forth a list of priority blocks for sidewalk replacement. And I was like, really? I've never seen that list. Could you please send it to us? So um and I don't know, you know, since there are many of us or several of us who are new, I think it would be good for us to get that list and review, because um sidewalks can be, you know, a point of contention as the uh chair knows well from her Chestnut Street times. Um and so, you know, but no, there is not one, a full sidewalk yet on the other side, but that doesn't seem to be something that the other side of the street is hopped up about.
Commissioner Sherman?
You're on mute.
Yeah, I support the uh uh the effort to support the neighbor. In fact, when she first contacted the A and C, she wasn't sure which single member district she was in. She contacted me. Um I didn't know offhand where she lived exactly, but I went over and visited the property. And then, of course, Laura took over from there. Um but I did have an opportunity to see the property, speak to the neighbor, hear her concerns. And so I am familiar with the issue and I support efforts to support her efforts to protect her trees.
So I think um our chairman had offered to wordsmith the resolution for me, so I will defer. Thank you, Lisa.
No problem. So commissioners, I move that we accept the neighbor's suggestion and request that D dot exempt her property from the sidewalk installation. Um and Commissioner Finacy, you can um with that, this is not part of the motion, but um with that, you can draft the response of the A and C. Um reiterating that to D dot. Um there a second for the motion, commissioners? Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so the motion carries six zero one. Abstention from Simmons.
Thank you, and she'll be very happy about the news. Thank you.
Yes, she will. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Laura, Commissioner Finacy. All right, okay. Just wanna make sure I'm doing the agenda right. So um Commissioner Sherman, are you up next with Department of Building?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Great. So let me welcome into the conversation two representatives from the Department of Buildings, Alisa Vitale, who's the de- deputy zoning administrator, uh and Jeff Reese, who's deputy chief building official. Uh they're here tonight to talk about the Maray School Athletic Fields project at the Episcopal Center for Children uh to give us an update on where matters stand with respect to um certifying occupancy for Maray and pending issues that have come before the commission and have reached them on numerous occasions concerning neighbor complaints, issues that neighbors have raised. Um and I'm grateful to Elise and Jeff for joining us tonight to address those concerns. And um I think that we on the commission, having heard from neighbors previously, are broadly familiar with the issues that they have raised. And I would turn to Elisa and Jeff to give us an update on their efforts to resolve these concerns they have and tell us what steps remain uh to to be taken. I would also acknowledge that uh Trey Holloway, uh deputy head of school from Maray is on the call tonight, and I believe he's on now. Carolyn Law, representing Maray, also is on the call tonight. So as needed, um Maray officials can come into the conversation. And of course, we have uh community members, constituents of mine, who may wish also to speak. So with that said, um Alisa or Jeff, which of the two of you would like to be the lead briefer on this? And you can give us, if you would, kind of a scene setter, a sense of where we are with respect to completing the project and what issues uh still remain to be resolved.
Sure. Uh good evening, Commissioner Sherman. Um good evening, residents and guests. Alisa Vitale, the deputy zoning administrator with the Department of Buildings. Um I'm happy to start out this evening. Um and Mr. Reese can certainly provide additional um context as appropriate, if that works.
Perfect.
Great. Um uh as noted, we've been invited um this evening to provide an update on the Maray Athletic Fields at fifty-nine oh one Utah Avenue Northwest. Um as many of you know, the school-related athletic field use was not permitted as a matter of right, and Maray received a special exception from the Board of Zoning Adjustment for this athletic field um use here at the Episcopal Center for Children. Um as part of that approval, the Board of Zoning Adjustment placed four conditions on the use. Um that included certain district department of transportation improvements in public space. Um the implementation of a transportation demand management plan and operations plan for the life of the project. Um and I I I know there's no one here from D dot this evening um to speak specifically to this project, but there certainly are um various agencies um involved in in this project here. And I know D dot Urban Forestry, DOB, um a number of other agencies have have played a role um in this, in this project.
Just a quick note, sorry to interrupt. Krista- Kristoff Bosmer is here from D dot.
Okay.
Have a follow-on session on the Flexi post at Utah, Nebraska, speaking to the transportation part of this. So yeah, please continue.
Okay, great. Well, that's good. I do have representatives available to speak to some of those items. Um another condition was related to installing and maintaining evergreen shrubbery along the outer perimeter of the parking lot. Not permitting the use of amplified sound devices, music or other um sounds or instruments at the athletic facilities. And finally, a condition um related to designating a representative um who will communicate with you, um A and C three four G for the purposes of mitigating any conflicts that might arise between Maray's operations at the subject property and the A and C. Um so that just sets the stage for the Board of Zoning Adjustment approval for the athletic field use at this location. Um after receiving that special exception approval, Maray submitted and obtained various permits from the Department of Buildings for site work and for improvements to uh construct the athletic fields. Um as you're aware, that that work has been underway and in progress for um for quite some time. That work is substantially complete and recently Maray applied for a certificate of occupancy um so that it may use the fields and occupy that recently improved space. Um as part of that certificate of occupancy application, um DOB went out and inspected the site last Thursday, July tenth. Um at the time of the inspection, it was determined that DOB was not ready to issue the requested certificate of occupancy. Um we also determined at that time that it would be premature to even issue a conditional um certificate of occupancy. In some instances, DOB might issue a conditional C of O while an applicant has time to, you know, address any kind of final items. Based on the inspection, um again, we were not prepared to issue a conditional or a final C of O. Um DOB is currently in the process of documenting the results of the inspection, um including inconsistencies between the approved plans and the as-built conditions. Um we are working to finalize that information and to um provide that to Maray for correction. So that is really kind of where we are right now. Um and I'll um I just turn it over to Mr. Reese if he has anything else that he would like to add. Um certainly from from a building code perspective, but that's that's the the summary from from the point of view of the Office of Zoning Administration and in our review to date.
So, thank you, Ms. Vitale. Um good evening, commissioners and residents of uh A and C three four. Um thank you for having us this evening. I think Ms. Vitale covered everything between the building code permit-based inspections and the inspections required by OZA. Um her assessment is comprehensive and complete. So thank you.
So thank you. Um let me just jump in then and and um ask a few particular questions and let commissioners ask questions. And of course, community members while we have you. And I'm mindful we had twenty minutes for this segment, and so we've got about, what, fourteen minutes or so left? Um couple of things, just back to the BZA order, Alisa. The four conditions that you outlined, one of which we're going to get to with respect to the transportation plan and the implementation at Utah, Nebraska. So I'll I'll park that for a second. But the conditions in the BZA order were alongside a a number of findings of fact that also laid out a number of circumstances that I know Maray has been attentive to with respect to completing the project. And were originally, some of them, many of them, captured in the memorandum of understanding between the A and C and Maray for the construction of the fields that was not fully adopted by the Board of Zoning Adjustment, but significant parts were. So you and I have talked about this before. Just for the clarity here, when you're now looking at Maray's completion of the project and issuing the certificate of occupancy, you're particularly focused, as I understand it, on these four conditions. Can you speak, though, to these other findings of fact issues that do get into a lot of the things that the neighbors have raised?
Sure, certainly. And as part of the building permit, um and as I mentioned, there there were multiple permits pulled, including um civil permits for site grading as well as other building permits for general improvements. As part of the zoning review of the building permit, um specifically the one that related to m- most of the field improvements, things like the scoreboard location, um the bleachers, the lighting at the the security lighting at the parking lot. Um so those findings of fact, which had very, very detailed considerations in terms of um numbers of seats for the bleachers, they had um spoke specifically to improvements that were going to be made. There's a small um corner park, kind of at the northwest corner of the site that was meant as a a neighborhood amenity for the community. Um we certainly looked at all of those findings of fact. And as part of our review of the building permit application, we crosswalked those items. They weren't conditions. So it wasn't something that we could say, yes, the order um, you know, required this. I know there were certainly some items. Um the color of the poles for the field netting, um whether that community park area was going to be fenced in or not fenced in. Where we said, look, we see, you know, we're we're seeing something on the plan sheets that doesn't align um specifically with one of the findings of fact. We don't want to approve a permit that's contrary to these findings of fact um without getting feedback from the community, since the community played such a such a significant role in um coming to an agreement and coming coming to um kind of a resolution and approval of this project um and weighed in certainly at the time of the of the BZA hearing. So while they are not conditions, um they are things that we we reviewed and looked at as part of our review of the building permit applications.
Could you then, um are you liberated to say um issues that remain to be resolved for DOB to issue even a conditional certificate of occupancy? Because some of those issues might cover matters that neighbors have raised.
Sure, I don't I don't want to say, um I don't want to speak to a conditional or a final at this time. Um but I I I can say there there were items that were were not yet um at the field and ready for installation. Um things like the dugouts, there was some, you know, fencing and poles that were shown on the plans that I think had been not installed um because they felt it wasn't necessary and may have been more visually intrusive for the neighbors. So we we are going through and reviewing um, you know, everything that is shown on the plans that were approved, counting seats on bleachers, those types of things, reviewing all of that information. Um cross-checking that against what exists in the field. And then those those inconsistencies are the types of things that we will be identifying and sharing. Maray was with us at the time of the inspection. I think they're aware of um kind of issues or concerns that we noted as part of that inspection the other day.
I want to open it up to any community members that wish to speak and, of course, commissioners as well. Three quick things, though. Um the goalposts, the lighting and the perimeter shrubbery on the east side of the property, creating effectively a shield, a a barrier, kind of a a a large barrier on that side with the properties that are on twenty-eight street. Um are those issues you could you could speak to?
Um the I I'm not, the question about the goalposts, I'm not sure um what the question is. I know they are supposed to be removed when they're not playing football. We did ask about that. They said they they were up for purposes of inspection. Um the lighting um that is, there was not an electrician um at the site at the time of the inspection, so those um security lights in the parking lot were not turned on. Um so we can't speak to their um kind of wattage and whether that matches what was on the approved plans. Um your final question, the perimeter landscaping, the condition related to the perimeter landscaping is specific to um surrounding the perimeter of the parking lot. Um I know there is a bio-retention area located on the east side of the parking lot. Um I know there isn't landscaping currently wrapping the border of that um bio-retention area. I don't think that was shown. I again, I would need to look at the plan set specifically about the the landscaping there. Um but I believe the the bio-retention area is kind of standing in for that buffer at the east side of the parking lot.
Okay, and just one other quick thing for me before asking for commissioners and community members to speak on this. Um the hours of operation uh for community use that were set forth in the BZA order differ from the MOU set forth between the A and C and Maray. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it is the hours in the MOU that are posted for future community use, not the hours in the BZA order. Um so if I'm not mistaken, and if Maray officials wish to speak to this as well, we'd want to rect it, we're to sort of clarify, resolve that discrepancy. Because it obviously makes a huge difference in terms of telling community members when they can actually use the field.
Sure, and we sort of, like I said, we would, we would go by the language in the order. Um if the posted hours vary from the language in the order, um and they are consistent with the A and C agreement, I think we would look to the A and C to indicate whether or not, you know, which which hours it was supportive of. And I do, I do want to reinforce that one of the conditions is for Maray to provide a point of contact, to be able to have these discussions um to interact and engage with the community so that when there is an instance of um something like this, a a question, um I think when we were reviewing the plans, like I said, you know, light light poles versus dark poles, fencing around the park versus no fencing around the park. You know, we we were able to play um kind of go-between or mediator in those instances. But these fields and this use will will live on and we want to make sure that Maray is being a good neighbor to the community. And I think a big part of that is having um an individual and a point of contact identified and available so that if the hours may change, six months down the road, it may be like we've lived with this and we realize that you know, we like what was in the BZA order better, or we like what was in our agreement better. Um we want that dialogue to be able to continue to happen um between the community and Maray. So I think we're, we don't want to um insert our preference here. We would look to the community and if there And if there is, in an instance like this, where there is a, there's a, a difference between what was in the MOU and what was in the BZA order, we would certainly look to the community for guidance to make sure that, however it's resolved, you know, meets the interest of, of the community.
Very good. I'd like to go to Commissioners quickly, and then to community members. Commissioner Finisi?
Yeah, hi. I heard you refer to wattage and low wattage. And I think I was on the Mayor's Streetlight Advisory Panel during the LED rollout and spent a lot of time talking about lights and streetlights. And one of the things that I noticed in the kind of understanding that Maray and the neighbors had worked out is that their lighting is really, is fuzzy, right? And they refer to things like low wattage, but that's completely, not completely. It's almost completely irrelevant in talking with LED lighting, which they are using. Because the watt, the lumens-to-watt ratio is so high now with LEDs that you can produce with a 10-watt bulb, which you used to produce with 150-watt bulb. And so using wattage as a guide is not appropriate. And what we need to look at is the amount of lumens, which is the amount of light at the source. And in their parking lot, they are using double fixtures, which produce approximately 30,000 lumens. The fixtures on I-295 South have about 19,000 lumens. So they've got 150% of what we have in I-295 at every pole. And because of the grade of the property, even though those fixtures are technically downlit, they do cause glare to the properties that are below the grade of those fixtures. And so those immediate neighbors, I mean, it's just like a blast of light. I've seen it. And the color temp is a little bit adjustable. I spoke with the manufacturers and went back to Maray, and I think they adjusted it. But they do also have glare shields, but I really, they're, they're not even the right fixtures. These are, those are fixtures for a Walmart parking lot. And the amount of light that they put on the ground with a 10-foot pole, which is what they have them at, it's staggering and not at all. So I would ask, you know, that I be involved in a conversation about lights because I don't think that these are at all right, and they're causing great discomfort to the neighbors.
Sure. And again, I want to reiterate that we are looking at what was in the approved plans. So what Maray submitted as part of its building permit set, and if they have constructed and installed, again, in, in accordance with that building permit set. I think if there are ongoing concerns from the community about the lighting, again, I would reinforce that this is the, this is why there needs to be that, that point of contact and that conversation between the community and the school. And if they have constructed according to the approved plans, there is little recourse for DOB at this point because they have submitted plans. Those plans were reviewed and approved, and they have constructed consistent with those plans. If we go out, if we determine that as part of ongoing inspections, that the LED lighting, whatever lumens or wattage that they have specked in their approved permit is not what was installed, then we would have recourse because they did not build according to the approved plans. If there is now a desire to negotiate with Maray and say, we want something different from what you installed, that's a conversation to have with Maray.
Do you know to what degree the plan specified things like color, mounting height, glare, bug ratings, lumens, CCT, et cetera?
It had pole height, it had a detail for the lighting, and it had a range of wattage, I believe.
Right. Yeah, but wattage is really, that's not the appropriate measure.
So let's keep it moving. Commissioner Gaslin, then Claudia Russell.
Listen, I'll defer first to the, to the residents. But I just wanted to, let me just say this to Commissioner Finisi. I think what we're hearing from Ms. Vitale is that they, DOB's job with this inspection and process is to see that Maray lived up to the plans as they were laid out and approved by these various boards. But we, this, I would just say, this is my fifth year of hearing about this project. I mean, we're going to have a continuing conversation with Maray. And my view is that Maray has been accommodating so that I don't, I, I'm not sure. I, it sounds to me, and Ms. Vitale, you correct me if I'm wrong, as if you don't have the ability to adjust on any of these parameters that Commissioner Finisi is talking about, to change the lighting requirements. Is that correct?
That, that is correct at this point. Like I said, we are reviewing it against the, the conditions in the BZA order. We reviewed the findings of fact when we reviewed the, the permit set that was submitted. Again, we had conversations in those instances where we felt it was, you know, changing, deviating from those findings of fact to make sure that we, you know, weren't intentionally approving a change that was something that the neighborhood had not been consulted on. And now we are verifying construction in accordance with those approved plans and do not have the liberty to say, you know, now we would like your, your fence, the poles that support the fence to be blue. If they specked black, they are black. That was consistent with the order. We, we are limited in our ability now to go back and negotiate changes.
Well, I just think that DOB was faulty in using wattage as a criterion. That's a faulty issue. In this day and age, to use wattage for LED lights, that's on you guys. You should not have done.
And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm dealing with this from the zoning side. I can certainly speak to other reviewers that would be more appropriate for looking at those types of issues. But from the zoning perspective, I'm, I'm not in a position to be able to go back and tell them to, to, you know, remove those lights and put something else in.
I want to keep this moving on our time schedule. So Claudia Russell.
Hello, and thank you, Ms. Vitale and Mr. Reese for appearing tonight and for also answering numerous questions. I have a fundamental question, and that is that at the BZA hearing, there were multiple representations shown of vegetation that would obscure this field to those people who were on the east side. And they were mammoth. I mean, you would, you could not see the field. And those plantings aren't there. And the question is, there are three representations, right? What was shown at the BZA hearing? What was in the BZA order? And what was permitted in the drawings, as I understand it? And it feels like perhaps the BZA presentation, which represented to the BZA and to the citizens, what we expected to see. And how does that fit into the construct that you're describing?
Sure. And certainly, I, I know there were renderings shown at the time of the BZA hearing, and renderings are often rosy, if you will, somewhat, you know, images of what a project might look like and are not, not necessarily, you know, a true depiction of what construction will, will ultimately deliver. So yes, there were renderings shown at the, at the BZA hearing. When the BZA grants relief for something, they're generally, they're, they're granting relief. They were saying there can be an athletic facility serving a private school in this location. If someone wanted to add an addition to their house because they wanted a slightly larger kitchen and they needed relief from the rear yard requirements of the zoning regulations and had to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment for relief, the board would grant them dimensional relief. Say you needed a 25-foot rear yard, your kitchen addition was going to encroach five feet, the board would grant you relief of five feet from that 25-foot rear yard. And they would generally, as part of their approval, say, we are going to grant this consistent with the plan shown at Exhibit 12, if you will, in the record. And those plans might show, you know, a site plan. So Plan View would show how large that kitchen is. It goes 10 feet back and encroaches five feet into the required rear yard. They might show an elevation. That elevation might show a door and windows. And so when the homeowner goes to pull that building permit to actually construct that kitchen addition, they'll say, look, I, I went to the BZA, I got my relief. Here's my order. And DOB, the zoning technician, when they reviewed that plan, would look at the order. They would say, oh, it says it's, you know, approved consistent with Exhibit 12 in the record. And they've got, you know, they've got a 20-foot rear yard rather, rather than the 25-foot rear yard that's required. The zoning regulations itself spell out certain areas where plans can deviate from because the board's really granting relief. They're not approving a specific project. They don't know that that homeowner's going to put, you know, hardy panel siding. Or if the board says, we really want that homeowner to put hardy panel siding, they would make that a condition of the approval. And so those plans are informative. The board is not approving that project specifically. So the zoning technicians, when they review permit applications, they have to look, they look at the order, they look at the exhibits that are referenced, they look at the conditions. So in this case, it was approving a use. Maray provided plans that showed generally where the goalposts were going to be located, where the, the multipurpose portion of the field was going to be located, where there would be retaining walls, where the parking lot was, that they would have bike racks in certain locations. So all of that was spelled out. They showed renderings that showed mature trees. They didn't specify as part of that BZA order. They said there will be evergreen plantings around the perimeter of the parking lot to screen from the views of neighbors. So there's not a condition, there's not something that says these have to be a particular species, that they have to be 10 feet tall in height at the time that they're planted. That, so none of that, none of that specificity that would get you mature evergreen plantings screening the entire field. None of that was baked in, if you will, into this BZA order and into this approval. So you now have evergreen plantings, but they're certainly not mature. The condition says that they need to be maintained. So if 10 of the 50 that are planted don't make it through August, that's the ongoing kind of conversation and discussion with Maray to say that you have this condition, you need to, you need to satisfy this condition. And, you know, if, if plantings die off, if they don't survive, that they, this evergreen perimeter around the parking lot at a minimum would need to be maintained. So I know that's probably not, not the answer that you want to hear, but a rendering is a rendering and without, you know, without specificity in terms of species and size and time of planting were left with kind of very few tools to say, you know, what you showed in the rendering doesn't, doesn't look like what's there today.
I do have just one follow-up, and that is, is the bio-retention wall considered part of the perimeter of the parking?
And, and I, I, I want to look at that in more detail. In preparation for tonight, I was reviewing the conditions and noted that the, the language just says, you know, evergreen planting around the perimeter of the parking lot. I know from the site visit the other day that that bio-retention wall is, is unfinished. And there isn't planting kind of beyond it. So I, I do want to go back, review the, the plans approved by the BZA, review the permit set, and just make sure that that condition is, is reflective of what was, what was contemplated and what was approved.
Well, thank you very much for your response, and thank you for all your hard work because we really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bruce, you're on mute.
Yeah, apologies. We're, we're out of time for this segment. We're over time, in fact. But if indeed, Alisa and Jeff, you would want to stay on if you have time because we are going to segue into discussing the flexi posts at Nebraska and Utah, which the transportation plan is part, is, is a condition of the order. So I think if you have time, if not, that's okay. But Commissioner Gore, if you don't mind, that's the next agenda item. Should we just go ahead and move into that?
Yep.
One thing, tagging on to the prior conversation, though, we don't have to discuss this at length, but it has been a repeated neighbor concern, and that is securing the property because we routinely have young people in the neighborhood hopping the fence. And to be clear, that's somewhat maybe in some regards to be expected with young people hopping fences and so forth, and they don't mean any harm. But on the other hand, one could imagine a scenario going down the road, but that would get out of hand. And so securing the property is Maray's responsibility, obviously, and it's something that their neighbors are talking to Maray about. And for Commissioners, this notion that is very important in the order, Maray would have a representative. We previously had a task force. This is in my single-member district. It's of a concern to the entire community, of course, and all the Commissioners have an interest in this, which I recognize. We will need to establish a, sort of a routine mechanism to deal with matters that come up. Because this is going to be a sports complex, it's going to be running and operating, and we have the order to look at. But we'll need to have this ongoing liaison and conversation with Maray, just to acknowledge that, right? So to segue to the issue at hand here, which is the placement by Maray, but in conjunction with the agreement Maray reached as part of its being granted as a special exception by the Board of Zoning Adjustment with the Department of Transportation for certain traffic and transportation safety measures on Nebraska and, Nebraska and Utah, including positioning flexi posts, as we've now seen them, at the intersection to prevent illegal parking during large game days when there's overflow parking on the streets and so forth. So this matter has elicited more community concern in my two and a half years on the Commission than any other single issue in a finite period of time. On Friday afternoon late, I introduced a survey of the community to get people's reaction to the flexi post. We'd already gotten a significant amount of reaction. But in order to be comprehensive and hear from voices we might not hear from, I launched a survey along with Commissioner Finisi and Commissioner Grunwald. Our three districts intersect at that intersection. And 450 people in 72 hours have responded. I mean, this is astounding in the history of this ANC to have this amount of response. And 280 of those respondents have provided comments. Currently, the, those opposed to the flexi posts are about 54%, compared to around 32% of people who favor them. But another 9% would favor them with some modifications. So you might call it a 53 to 42 split. But the issue here is that many, many, many neighbors have weighed in on this, and it's extraordinary. So tonight with Kristoff Wassmer, who's from D-DOT here. I, Kristoff, want to recognize you in being the liaison for the community. If you have any comments, we're welcome hearing from you. I do want to create an opportunity for my colleagues, Commissioner Finisi, Commissioner Grunwald, to represent their neighbors' concerns. And on this survey, I would say that of my single-member district residents, almost 220 of the 450 have responded. So I'm here to speak on their behalf as well. So Commissioners, I see this as an opportunity to hear further from the community, to have Kristoff take this on board. I can brief you on my conversations with his DDOT colleagues today on this because there were conversations all day around this. And then, Alisa and Jeff, if you want to listen in, that's great. So I would like to turn it to Commissioners first on this, and Commissioners Grunwald and Finisi. Commissioner Grunwald, would you like to start representing your constituents, and we'll go to Commissioner Finisi?
Yep, that would be great. So, so these, these posts were a real surprise to some of my constituents. I have several constituents who are vociferously opposed to these. And they, of course, are the ones that are contiguous, the closest ones to these posts. So there's a lot of confusion about how these posts came to, to be and what the real purpose of them is. Are, are they, are they there for multiple reasons or one primary reason? And so there's a lot of, a lot of information that, that my constituents need to really understand what's happening here. So. And so there's a lot of, a lot of information that, that my constituents need to really understand uh, what's happening here. So people want to know who decided to go with the ugliest and cheapest pedestrian safety countermeasures at Utah and Nebraska? Was it Murray or DDOT, or did they collaborate on it? While excluding the neighbors, why weren't the neighbors given a choice? Uh, people want to know about that. Um, apparently, the choices that were given were concrete or floating curb extensions, flex posts, pavement markings and signage. Um, but there was no mention about speed tables or speed bumps combined with crosswalk markings. Um, people want to know who decided uh, that pavement markings and signage weren't enough, uh, as at other intersections in the neighborhood and near schools and other institutions. People want to know how much the installation cost. Um, and uh, people also want to know, shouldn't there have been a notice of intent? Uh, an NOI so that uh, of, of this impending street work? Um, apparently, it just, it just popped up on one weekend. People didn't seem to know that it was coming. Um, so if it, if there had been a notice of intent sent to the ANC, we, we, we would have known about it, and we could have in turn alerted our constituents to this. But instead, um, it, it just, you know, was a big surprise to, to everyone. Um, people want to know who decided there should, there should be a narrowing of the traffic lanes. Um, they want to know where is the study that indicates that there's a safety problem at this intersection? Have there been accidents there? People also want to know, people would like to have a description of the various type of curb extensions. There are ball bouts, I understand, which is a dramatic widening of the sidewalk. There are also floating curb extensions where the new curb is not attached to the sidewalk. It seems like a kind of a tripping hazard. Um, people are wondering why, uh, if, if, if uh, traffic calming is really needed at this intersection, why wouldn't they have uh, uh, you know, a choice of curb extensions rather than these ugly posts? And um, I think the residents are mostly concerned uh, about having been left out of the conversation here. Um, the residents who live here feel that they should have, and I agree, should they should have a major say in the type of traffic calming that is done in their immediate vicinity. And they should definitely have uh, a major say on the appearance, appearance of any of this work. And um, another comment I've been getting a lot is uh, that DDOT has overdone it. It's taken up too much space on the street and too much of residents' parking spaces. And people are also concerned about snow, what happens when it snows, how are these little spaces going to be cleared? So there's a lot of, I have a lot of concerns for my, my, um, my constituents. Thank you.
I want to thank you, Commissioner Grunwald. Return to Commissioner Finacy. I also want to acknowledge that, again, that um, uh, Assistant Head of School Trey Holloway is on the call. And he and I spoke earlier today, and I want to acknowledge Trey, and if he wishes to come in and provide some additional background uh, with respect to the questions you've raised, Commissioner Grunwald. Uh, but Commissioner Finacy, let's go to you and, and, uh, and, and hear your concerns.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, yeah, we had, uh, my comments came about um, maybe 10, I don't know, about 15%, yes. About 25% wanted other calming measures, and the rest of them, no. They were kind of hard down against it. Um, but a lot of my concerns were related to, interestingly enough, negative safety effects when this was designed to be presumably something to increase safety. They were concerned about the narrowing of the lanes and then swinging out for wide turns, whether it was a teenage driver who was trying to make a turn, or a bus driver who was trying to make the turn. One of my constituents wrote in that they almost got hit uh, when walking with their dog. And then, you know, they, the car stopped, and they said, you know, well, I was watching all the sticks, and I couldn't see you with all the sticks. Um, I saw comments with uh, people being concerned that the kids would have a false sense of security standing in the pylons, and then, you know, they might not really be so secure. Uh, lots of questions about snow. And um, many, many suggestions for temporary things that could be used by the school um, during special events as opposed to um, measures that were there all the time. Uh, and I should add, I don't think Commissioner Grunwald mentioned bikes, but I did have some uh, people write in about, you know, what happens because now the road is so much narrower. So you've got basically where you used to have a de facto space for bikes, that's taken out by the stanchions. And so now they'll be even with this tighter space on the road. But um, my constituents uh, generally did not find them attractive. Some found them that if they did a purpose and helped with safety, that they would be worthwhile. And there were some folks who, you know, thought it would help crossing the street, but some of them thought that because of the turning issues and the possible conflict with bikes, that it actually would be less safe.
So thank you, Commissioner Finacy, for that. Um, Kristoff Wassmer's had his hand up from DDOT, Commissioner Goslin has his hand up. I would just like to offer very brief context, and again, I invite Trey Holloway from Murray to come into this as well. Uh, and that is that the plan that was implemented at Utah and Nebraska was negotiated probably three years ago. Uh, it was part of, as uh, Deputy Zoning Administrator Vitale has mentioned, uh, part, it's a condition established in the order that BZI established to approve the special exception from Murray. Murray had a transportation consultant that liaised with the Department of Transportation, DDOT, to specify traffic safety measures that needed to be put into place, given the increased use of this area due to the sports complex. And part of the measures specified were these um, stanchions or, or flexi posts at Utah and Nebraska. So back in the day, there was conversation, it was presented at the BZI. Uh, there, but there was a long period of time between the approval of these, the specification and approval as part of the order, and the implementation. Um, and so uh, I just, for context, want to present that. Trey, is there anything you'd like to add to that, for folks to understand how this came about initially?
Uh, sure, and then what you said is correct, right? It was um, it started really in late calendar year 2021, when um, conversations started with DDOT, our consultants from Wells and Associates, who do tons of traffic work all over the city and, and work with DDOT pretty regularly. There was an exchange of ideas between them and DDOT. I actually went back and looked at some of my emails, and there was kind of negotiating back and forth what, you know, our folks thought was appropriate, what DDOT thought was appropriate. Ultimately, DDOT had to approve the plan of, of what was put out there. There is one thing that has come up. Um, and specifically in the chat, but I know, I think I've heard it said as well, that these were for um, to discourage parking close to the intersections. I would say the, the way these are characterized in many of the emails and documents I went back and looked at is that it was for pedestrian safety, not so much for parking close to the intersection. So when people are walking out into the intersection so there's more room, that the um, what some folks have described as negative effects, I think, is the intended effect of the flexi post to increase pedestrian safety. Um, and then I would just double down on the, on the item too, that this is part of our written BZI order that we, um, that we meet this condition with DDOT. So that's why they were installed. And again, doubling down on the point that Commissioner Sherman made, that there, there was conversation about this and around this, going back late 2021, early 2022.
Right. I think the disconnect for people, as we're hearing it, is that obviously you fast forward until just recently, the weekend of the 21st and 22nd of June, when they were installed. And um, there was some community that kept in the Murray Task Force. I put it in my newsletter that there would be these improvements made at the intersection. Um, but I think um, given that this plan was already approved, going back and relitigating it in its entirety would not have happened. Um, but perhaps greater publicity around what these might have looked like to prepare people. But in any event, we are where we are right now. Um, I want to go to Commissioner Goslin and then, then Kristoff Wassmer. You're, you're muted.
Unmuted. Um, I just wanted to address two issues. Uh, one raised by Commissioner Grunwald, and another that's come up again and again on the list, they're discussing this since uh, this controversy about them started. Um, the notion that the public had no say in this, I think, is wrong. Um, I've been, this has been an issue, the issue of the development of the field uh, at the ECC has been an issue essentially since I've been on the uh, commission. Um, there were, we had hours and hours and hours, over eight months of hearings about this. And when it came to Nebraska Avenue and, and that intersection of Nebraska and Utah, there was a great deal of concern about um, it becoming a raceway, particularly on game days, uh, about parking, about pedestrian safety. Uh, and I, um, Commissioner Sherman is right. In the, in a perfect world, we would have reprised all the, uh, that discussion, or some of that discussion. But the notion that, uh, that uh, the public and particularly the immediate neighbors had no voice in this is, is, is not correct. Um, uh, I actually was the secretary of the uh, commission at the time. Uh, and I think my record may have been a 20-page, um, 20 pages of minutes for one meeting. Um, uh, they, they were lengthy. The other thing, uh, and this comes from the um, the lists are, uh, people keep saying that these, that categorically, that flexi posts uh, um, don't work, that they do not improve safety. Um, I actually got on the ANC because I live at a very dangerous intersection of Military Road and Chevy Chase Parkway. And my, I consider one of my greatest accomplishments of, as a, as an ANC commissioner, is to get, count them, four flexi posts, just four, on the lead up uh, uh, from Chevy Chase Parkway to Military Road. Prior to those being installed, there were on average of 12 to 20 accidents every single year, and I've lived here 26 years. After uh, they went up, along with a painted stop ahead sign on the, on the pavement, there hasn't been, there may be one every other year. So they, they do work. In the perfect world, we'd have the concrete uh, outproppings from the curb, but they do work and they're inexpensive. Thank you.
Uh, I want to go to community members, so Kristoff, to you first, and then we'll go to community members.
All right, good evening. Thank you for having me, uh, ANC 34G. My name is Kristoff Wassmer. I am the Ward Two and Ward Three Liaison for the District Department of Transportation. Um, first, I want to thank Commissioner Sherman um, for the survey. I feel like that is, you know, one of the most impressive amounts of community engagement I've seen. Um, and, and number of comments on a survey um, regarding a safety improvement. I also want to address some of the questions that have come up so far, and also address um, at least from the DDOT's perspective. Um, of course, I was not um, on board and working on this project when it was um, in front of the Board of Zoning Adjustments. But I can explain our process and how we go through and how we do development review. And, and that is all, you know, related in public documents that show our process and, and what we typically do. And so this is a very standard safety improvement that we would do um, for a development like this. Um, I heard mention of, of cost, and this is all included in, in the BZI order. Um, but I believe it was $70,000 for the safety improvements at this intersection. And um, any amount, if, you know, they completed the safety improvements and there was extra funds left over, that that would be then um, forwarded to the um, District Department of Transportation's um, Transportation Fund. Um, then there was a question about why flex posts. So flex posts are, are standard material that we use for daylighting intersections. Um, and you might ask what daylighting is. Um, daylighting, as um, Trey explained, is giving more space and allowing drivers that are driving and approaching an intersection to visually see pedestrians more clearly. So it gives space for pedestrians to enter into the crosswalk and into the intersection um, while they're still being protected by a physical barrier. In this case, it's a flexible pylon. It also allows the vision, so it, it also prevents people from parking there. So when there's parked cars or obstructions blocking the vision, then cars can't see it. So it does work both ways. It prevents parking near intersections, and it also, and by doing that, it also improves um, pedestrian safety because the intended benefit of flex posts are that drivers are, pedestrians are more visible to drivers. And then, in this case, it's also um, widening the turning radius for cars that are approaching the intersection. So it's narrowing the road, so you're taking a road that is, was before um, much wider, and now it's narrowing it. And the turning radius, um, they have to take a slower and longer turn around um, the flex posts. I think there's been enough discussion about the um, study and what was the history of um, you know, what led up to the flex posts. But it was work between Murray and um, DDOT's Development Review Team about what would be appropriate here, but then also with the community and feedback on what type of demand would be um, created, pedestrian demand, vehicular demand at this intersection. Um, so some safety improvements, some safety countermeasures were included as part of the BZI order um, to improve pedestrian safety. Um, then there was something else that was brought up about bus operations. So we've heard this, we worked with WAMADA when we were doing this to make sure, and we had auto turn. Um, and auto turn is basically just making sure that cars can make that turn, buses can make the turn, trucks can make that turn. Uh, with the flex post there. Um, this was all um, proven in our, you know, methods and our, and our systems. Of course, sometimes it changes in practice. Um, and so we have been working, we asked WAMADA to check with their drivers if there have been any, uh, you know, if the drivers have any issues turning. Um, so we will have more information on that um, this Wednesday. And then I, I heard mention of snow. Um, so unfortunately, there will, we don't have the ability to um, you know, remove snow in these curb extension areas. But um, you know, that's the case a lot of times in snow. Um, you know, we see these areas where people drive, and um, they aren't using the whole roadway. And there are a lot of spaces where snow is left and is pushed up onto the side. Um, and so, you know, this is something where over time, as people walk in, and, and neighbors, adjacent property owners, um, clear that space. Um, and if there's any issues with clearing snow in your neighborhood, then I, you know, can forward some, some DC government resources that can help assist with clearing snow. Um, but yeah, I'm impressed by the amount of comments um, and survey responses. Um, and uh, you know, happy to take back all your feedback um, on this safety improvement.
Thank you, Kristoff. Let's get some of that feedback from our neighbors. Rebecca Madak, you have your hand up, please, go ahead.
Yes. First of all, I want to say this is such an overkill situation. And you said that the district's going to come and shovel a whole lane of traffic through the snow? That's incorrect. I live on the corner. I'm 70 years old. I'm retired on a disability, and now I'm expected to shovel the right-hand lane to the snow? And what about the crosswalk? There's so much crosswalk included in the, inside these stanchions. Who's going to shovel that? And it also stops me from using my lead sidewalk across the tree box to access my house. So now when I unload my groceries or anything, if I have to carry something in the house, I'm walking across the tree box, which is uneven because they took down trees, plant trees, whatever, even though I keep filling dirt in there, and I keep tripping. That's not a good situation. Then once we have snow, because we've been having record snow, now I'm going to have to worry about the snow on top of the tree box. It doesn't have to come out that far. You guys took a sliver of a finger for a non-existent problem. This is one of the few traffic light controlled intersections in the neighborhood. We have had no pedestrians hit by a car. We've had no, I've been here 27 years. I don't know of any accidents in that intersection. This would seem more appropriate for a four-way stop than a traffic, traffic light controlled intersection. And the buses do have problems making that turn. I sat there and watched them. The front bumper goes over the double, the center line, and I asked them about it. They said, we can't complain. They'll get in trouble, or they'll be taken off the route or something. They're really hesitant to complain to DDOT. And it's like, you guys are fixing a problem that doesn't exist. How idiotic is that? You spend seventy thousand dollars on something that we don't probably need? Why don't we wait and see what happens before we start correcting things that we don't even know will happen? It's just ridiculous. This seems like it's more punitive action for people like me who are against the fields at Murray, because there's no need for this. How can I not, I can't use my lead sidewalk, really? I can't pull up, my neurosurgeon said that if I don't have back surgery again, I could end up in a wheelchair. I can't even pull my car up to enter through the door on my car because the stanchions are in the way to use my lead sidewalk. I use a dolly to bring things up, and now I have to go over the tree box. This is ridiculous. And there's much other things. I sent all my comments to the commissioners, but it's, it's stupid.
Rebecca, thanks. I want, I want to go to Mary Callahan, then Jennifer Leonard, and then Ashley Whitty.
Thanks, Bruce. I want to go back quickly to the Murray Field Plantings and advise Trey and others that I was one who originally said that many of their planting plans were not deer resistant. And Murray has also not been taking care of those plantings and watering them to desist the extreme heat we are now getting from the field, and I'm getting it half a block away. In addition, Rebecca is right. You have to go way out of your way to take a right turn from Utah onto Nebraska. There is a blind spot. You have to watch people coming up from Nebraska on both sides of the road and coming across Utah on both sides of the road. It is now a really dangerous intersection. Moreover, we now have buses taking that turn twenty-four, seven, which did not exist before the new Wamata plan. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Jennifer.
Sure. Thank you so much, Bruce, and to all the commissioners for elevating this topic. I live on the corner of Nebraska and Utah. As you can imagine, I'm not excited about this. I think I have a couple of points, and I'm not going to reiterate everything, all the good comments that were made already and in the, in the chat, but a couple of items, I'm just going to like put out there. For anyone who has a home, and one day on a Saturday afternoon, you drive up and this is in front of your house, and you don't feel like you've been asked about it. It feels intrusive, it's unsightly, and we work really hard in our neighborhood, and I know everybody does, to maintain the beauty of the, the neighborhood, our own property. It's, it's, I'm, I can't even go to the safety things. It feels so inappropriate. You don't see this in residential neighborhoods, anywhere else in Chevy Chase, and it really does block the view and just looks ugly when we spend a lot of time trying to maintain our property. It is visually distracting. I, different people interpret safety signs and posts different ways. I find it extremely visually distracting. And I come from all different directions because of my work route, my children's carpool routes and everything. I come from all four intersections. And every single time, I get visually distracted and thrown off by what is supposed to go where. I completely disagree with the safety propositions behind this. Three, ever since Bruce has been our neighborhood commissioner, I read everything, I respond to everything. I can't say what happened before Bruce was our commissioner, but if I was asked about the bollards or the flexa posts or whatever you want to call these things, I would have responded. I have lived in this home since, I think, twenty fourteen. I personally don't know that I've ever received any communication asking me about what it would look like and how would I feel if someone put up this setup in front of my home. Trust me, I would have responded. Two more quick points. St. John's is a much bigger school with a much bigger population, massive football games. The parking extends all the way on game days to our home. I've never seen an unsafe situation, and nor do I mind that people park in our house for something fun every once in a while. So I don't understand why we don't see bollards and lines all over the St. John's property, and yet for a school of a much smaller scale, we've got very unsightly parking preventive and unsafe bollards in front of our home. And then finally, they just don't belong in a residential neighborhood such as ours. I don't find them safe. I've already said they're unsightly, and I appreciate the opportunity to say this. I like to be unbiased. I like to be able to present normally something a little bit more fair-minded and both-sided, but I can't in this one.
Jennifer, thank you. Ashley. You're muted there, Ashley.
Okay, there we go. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone who's on this. I appreciate everyone's time. Everyone has already made excellent points that I would say are completely in line with my view and my husband's view, who's also here this evening. When I, I have to piggyback on what Jennifer mentioned specifically, that the way this was gone about, and I've lived here for twenty-one years, to see this happen, I think it's particularly, for lack of a better word, shady, that this happened very quickly on a Saturday, when hardly anyone could be contacted, nothing could be done about it. I know there's been mentioned that this was mentioned at previous meetings, and I'm sure there was. I'm sure that these are effective and safe in some neighborhoods, but it's not necessary at our intersection. There has never been a pedestrian accident. There has never been problems with children. I walk my dogs every morning. I have grown children. There's just no issue here because we're lucky that we have a stoplight and we've got these beautiful, you know, pedestrian crossways that there's just no issue and there's no need. So I would really like to see the data that was used to support this, and I'm not talking about national data, and I'm not talking about data in other areas of DC. What evidence is there to support the need for this? And I get really frustrated when I read things like traffic calming, the amount of traffic that has already increased, and we're not even in school session right now. The number I was saying to Becky, who is my neighbor, I'm at the corner of Utah, Nebraska. The honking all day long now that I'm listening to because people are used to using that de facto turn lane when people are trying to go right on Nebraska, when people are waiting to go across the intersection, that's gone. So now people are honking so people will make the light so they can hurry and make their turn. Becky mentioned she sat at that light for three light patterns the other day, waiting to get across. It's causing so much traffic, schools not even in session, and I just think, in addition, they're unsightly, we've lost so much parking, we've lost legal parking in a prevention to avoid people parking illegally. And I just feel like as the residents, you can say that it was put into something that we had access to or was told about, but I would have, like Jennifer said, I would have opposed it. I don't read everything, but the second this went up, I got on my computer and I started to try to get involved because as the residents, especially these four corners, if we don't want it here, I don't understand why our opinion isn't more valued.
Great, Ashley, thank you. I want to exhaust all the community concerns. I go back to, before I go back to the commissioners. If you have an interest in speaking, please raise your hand. Claudia Russell is the last community member that I see with her hand up. No one else comes in, then I'll go Claudia and then go back to, to, to the commissioners. Claudia, go ahead.
Well, I'd just like to point out, if we're concerned about traffic safety, there are two bumpouts that are at the entrance to the Murray Parking Lot, which have no signage at all, and they basically bump out and obscure the full right lane of Nebraska. And people coming up Nebraska in the right lane are going to be very surprised when they hit a bump out without any signage or acknowledgement. And that feels a little dangerous to me. So if we're talking about danger, we might look in our own backyards. Thanks.
That's not true. They don't obscure the whole right lane on Nebraska.
They come out quite, oops, they come out quite far.
You said they obscure the whole right lane. I'm sorry. It was rude of me.
Okay, maybe two-thirds, but the point being, if a car came up the right lane, they would hit the bump out.
I agree.
And that is fact. Now, whether it is two-thirds, three-quarters, I can't tell you. I haven't measured. But I have seen cars speed up Nebraska Avenue at night. And if they hit that bump out, I find it dangerous.
If they hit the bump out, they swerved out of the road.
They don't, you mean hitting a curb head-on is, you would swerve? I, I, I just think someone should look at it. This is your judgment and my judgment, and we have someone from DDOT here. I think it should be looked at because I do think it is dangerous personally. And I've seen cars go very quickly up the street past my house.
Comment, comment registered. And, uh, community members, if you have comments, again, raise your hands, but I'll go back to the commissioners. Uh, and in no particular order, but Commissioner Goslin, Gore, Nagy, and then Grunwald.
Excuse me, Bruce. Barton Leonard has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see his hand up. I'm sorry. Barton, go ahead.
Hi, I'm so sorry. I can't get my video to work, and thank you, guys. I think everybody's made some fantastic points, good discussion. Mostly, I just want to say that a unobstructed line of vision is generally considered the most safe thing for any intersection. Installing seventy, a little more than seventy white bollards is definitely the opposite of a unobstructed line of vision for a intersection, and they're about the same height as a small child. And if we're talking about child safety, I'm definitely concerned. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, commissioners, Goslin, Gore, Nagy, and Grunwald.
Just very quickly to Jennifer Leonard's point, that bollards are not in residential areas. As I say, there are bollards beside my house. If you go to Blessed Sacrament, where Chevy Chase Parkway peels off and Patterson Street, there's a bollard island there. At Forty-Second Street and Military, there's a bollard island there. Well, those are three examples.
Great. Commissioner Gore.
Just real quick, maybe DDOT can answer this question for me. Is, if, is this something that would have traditionally triggered a notice of intent? And if so, why didn't we have a notice of intent on this?
That's a great question. Because this was through the development review process, this is not a necessarily DDOT project, so it's not, it would not trigger, you know, a notice of intent. You know, the engagement was done when we were, when Murray was going through the BZA process and getting the special exemption. And our recommendations were made then. It's my understanding that Murray School has done a lot of engagement and has a very public-facing site with weekly updates on what they're working on. And, I mean, I understand that it's not convenient for the public necessarily always be checking the website to see what updates are happening. And it's maybe not front and center for them, but it is available and they have been communicating with the public.
So let me ask this question. I got a few questions on this. Whose responsibility, since we don't have the standard notice of intent, which would come to the ANC? Because I'm, I might have missed it, but I don't remember DDOT or Murray coming to the ANC saying that the bollards were getting ready to go into place. With the notice of intent, the community has, what, forty-five days or thirty days to respond and look at it?
Maybe I wasn't clear. There would, there is no notice of intent in this process.
I understand that. I'm just asking for process. I'm a process person.
Okay, okay. So in the process.
Normal process is how many days do, does a community get on a notice of intent?
So in the normal process for, and the only reason why DDOT would issue a notice of intent is if we're changing traffic operations or if we're going to be removing parking. And so in those cases, then we would submit a notice of intent and ANC would have thirty business days to respond. And then DDOT would then respond to ANC's comment and then make a decision off of that.
And so because this went through the BZA process, are you all saying that there's no way to go back and look at it after installation? Is there room to negotiate with the community? What are we talking about here?
I think there is room to look, and so DDOT is actively looking at this, at this curb extension, see how we can improve. Currently, we've changed our design standards. I know people have mentioned the number of flex posts that have been used, that there are seventy installed there. We've changed our design standards from having flex posts at every five feet to now every ten feet. And so that's something that, you know, we're looking at for a change in design. And then also there were concerns raised for a resident that lives near the intersection that needs to use their concrete landing pad. And so moving the flex post a little bit in to accommodate that resident was also included in comments. So, you know, there are potential changes for design. But, you know, through, in, I hear a lot of people mentioning that this was not a problem before. But that's part of these development review projects is that we're looking and we're evaluating what type of increased demand will happen at this intersection as part of the project. And so what this intersection will look like in the future is different from what it looks like today. And what we're trying to do is improve safety to, they would just generally improve safety at the intersection, but then also improve safety considering the increased demand at the intersection.
Commissioner Gore, did you, does that answer your question? You might have had another question, though.
Well, yeah, I guess, you know, it'll just be a comment, Bruce. I'm not sure what the ask is going to be, but, you know, I really strongly recommend that before any, you know, major implementation, and I, I understand that this is part of the BZ order, BZA order, but this really has community members upset. This should not have been dropped on a community at the last minute. When this was discussed, that was what, two, three years ago? So things have changed at the intersection. People have changed in the neighborhood, and this should have come back to community. If you have an opportunity to relook at these traffic calming measures, and I know there is a lot of concern with the community about the traffic implications of that new field. You know, I think you have to look at that probably to satisfy the BZ order and to be in compliance, but I, I really just, you know, I will just say this needs to be a broader community conversation, and you might have to go back to the drawing board. I hope you take these comments from the community into consideration and, and come up with something that's acceptable to the community as well as protects pedestrian and traffic safety.
Thank you very much. We've got Commissioners Nagy and Grunwald, and then we'll wrap up.
Thank you. I, I, I'm glad to have heard you say, Kristoff, that you were taking into account the comments of the resident who has disabilities and can't get into her house in any reasonable fashion, because that is, of course, an ADA issue, which is not a good thing, right? And I think maybe there are other people on the street who may also have Americans with Disabilities Act issues, so it might be worthwhile, you know, trying to check it out because it's not going to go well if this ends up being a real big deal. So I'm glad, I'm super glad to hear that, that you did hear that comment. That was actually why I had my hand raised. I'm looking forward to seeing some action to take into account people with disabilities, not to denigrate in any way all the rest of the issues that everyone else has raised.
Thank you. Commissioner Grunwald.
Yes, I would like to say I agree with Commissioner Lisa Gore on this. And to Peter's point, if neighbors had had a voice, then why did the neighbors know that these flexi posts were coming? I have to say, I understand that flexi, Mr. Wassmer just told us that flexi posts are used in a standard way for daylighting intersections. I understand that. But why not use curb extensions or, or just signs and, and crosswalks, or a combination of signs, crosswalks, and speed bumps? Why do we have to use these extremely ugly plastic posts? I feel that these plastic posts, if they have to be used at all, should be used in commercial areas, not residential ones. I mean, I just have some desperately unhappy constituents. I believe that you need to really scale this back, and please consider using curb extensions, or, as I just said, signs, crosswalks, and speed bumps. I, I just believe that we are ruining our neighborhoods. What did, what, with these plastic posts? What, what did DDOT do before plastic poles became into, came into vogue? What, what, what did you use? All of a sudden, there seemed to be these, these plastic posts blossoming all, all downtown and all through our residential areas pretty soon. I mean, it, it's just, it's weird. We're just like a, you know, if an alien came down from another planet, he'd think something really weird's going on. We found all these plastic posts that were growing. So please. We found all these plastic posts that were growing. So please explain to me what D Dot did before the plastic poles came into vogue? And why can't we use curb extensions or signs, crosswalks and speed bumps? Thank you.
Kristoff, do you want to take that? And then Jim Witty wants to speak, and then we're going to wrap up.
Yeah, I mean, I can address generally the question of why flex posts and why are we, you know, using that, these? As I explained before, you know, the Federal Highway Administration, FHWA releases every year manual on uniform traffic devices, including like what is the standard for how to address and improve safety at intersections on highways on all our roads? And the instruction that we receive from federal government and DC is also required to follow the federal government because we're not a state. So we are required, and the instruction is to narrow the roadways as much as we can for local and collector roads, because that reduces speeds. And if, and I can share the data with you all, but generally if people are driving over about twenty miles per hour and they strike a pedestrian, the potential or likelihood of fatality is very low. It's between ten, twenty percent. The moment you get to twenty-five, to twenty-five miles per hour, it increases to thirty percent. The moment you get to thirty miles per hour, you have a eighty percent chance of fatality versus twenty percent chance of a serious injury. So reducing speeds is critical to pedestrian safety and multimodal safety across the city. So before, this has always been an issue in, you know, in the United States. Vehicular fatalities and transportation fatalities have always been issues. So part of DC's Vision Zero initiative is making DC have no traffic-related fatalities at all. And so that requires narrowing our roads and making them more visible and more friendly for all modes of travel.
So, but that doesn't answer, I'm sorry, it just doesn't answer my, my question. Why, why can't we use? Not all streets have these white posts. On other streets, there are signs that say no parking, you know, X number, you know, there's a sign X number of feet from the intersection saying, you know, no parking to the intersection. Why can't we use those with crosswalks and speed bumps? Or use some curb extensions or something like that? Why do they have to be these absolutely horrific, ugly white posts?
That's a good question. So we have signs up all across the city that instruct, you know, where you can and cannot park. But we have, you know, a high demand for parking in the city and people tend to park right up to the intersection, right up to the crosswalk. And we don't have the ability to be out there twenty-four seven issuing citations and tickets to all illegal parking. And so to prevent illegal parking and to permanently daylight these areas, we install physical barriers like flex posts. Now, you also mentioned there's, you know, concrete curb extensions. So these flex posts are intended to be a temporary fix for a more permanent solution in the future. One of the corners at this intersection is planned to have a buyer retention facility as part of a water treatment and stormwater treatment project. They'll be coming down the line. And that's an example of how these flex posts will then be replaced by more permanent features, using concrete, using plantings. So I understand. Then there was also a mention of, of speed bumps. Unfortunately, this roadway is not, does not meet the criteria for vertical traffic calming, like speed bumps or raised crosswalks. And I shared in the chat earlier a PDF for our vertical traffic calming guidelines.
Great. Commissioner Grunwald, did you want to continue? I don't want to cut your questioning short. We want to move to wrap up though, because we're way over time.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Kristoff, how lo, how, how long these temporary poles are going to be? I mean, how long is the, how long are the permanent, how long is it gonna take for the permanent fixtures to come in? Whatever they are.
I can get back to you on that. I don't have the timeframe and, and.
Do you know exactly, and do you know exactly what they're going to be?
Well, I know for, for the, the corner, I believe it's the Northwest Corner, it's gonna be a buyer retention facility. And then we have our traffic, sorry, temporary to permanent program. And that's basically looking at these intersections that have flex posts and they're making them permanent with concrete. And they're, you know, making these curb extensions more permanent. But that program i- is just, it's, it's pretty small and we're doing a couple of locations every year, every quarter. So, you know, it will take a while and I, I really don't have a sense about when it will happen.
Thank you.
Jim Witty, then I've got a few closing remarks. We'll wrap up. Go ahead.
Sure. The only thing, I, I just wanted to chime in here real quick, that, you know, if a parking space was gonna be taken away, that we would have been notified. Well, we weren't. My wife calls me on the twenty-first saying that someone's asked to, we need to put these in here, there and everywhere. So, you know, and we weren't notified. And, you know, as my wife said, we've lived here for twenty-one years. And we've had our children grow up through here. I went to high school at St. John's, you know, my father went there. So we've come through this neighborhood for many, many years. And I, I said, I would never want to live on the corner of Utah, Nebraska. Well, the whole time I've lived here, it's been very safe. And I think that, that needs to be taken into, you know, in, into context there. And there should be some studies related to what has actually happened at this corner. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous that it hasn't. I mean, let's wait and see what happens before we go ahead and see what's going on. You know, there was a parking spot taken. There's a parking spot taken in front of my, you know, my elderly neighbor. You know, so, and who is going to be the crosswalk to get across Nebraska Avenue? Who's gonna be shoveling that? I've had back surgery. I don't need to be doing that. You know, there's gonna be a lot of snow. There's, this is just gonna create, create an absolute traffic nightmare in this neighborhood. So it's, it just, you know, it definitely needs to be looked at one hundred percent.
Jim, for that. So to wrap up, there are a couple of bits of information that I want to share with you. I was on the phone for a good part of the day with some of Kristoff's colleagues at the Department of Transportation. Also spoke with Trey. There is a willingness on all sides, Trey. You can speak for yourself, but based on the conversation we had today, you noted that you wanted to work out a solution ultimately that would be good for the neighbors. And the folks at, at D Dot are willing to look at some alternative remedies, Kristoff. This is Marvarid and, and Eric Schwartz today. So this conversation was to share in full with you here what neighbors have to say, commissioners have to say. You're in possession of the four hundred and fifty responses to the survey with two hundred and eighty written comments. Copious comments from neighbors that we hope obviously you'll take on board. With respect to permanent fixtures, the buyer retention bed that Kristoff you mentioned is one. There were two other buyer retention beds that were already slated for installation in Nebraska and Utah. And those we discussed two years ago and had conversations with the community. And, and we talked today, I did with your colleagues, Marvarid and Eric, about possibly looking at those again. But I want to stress, we need to take all the community's comments on board. We need to come back with a plan that addresses their concerns. Both to, of course, address safety issues, but the aesthetic issues that people are expressing here vehemently, that they find the flexi posts unsightly and, and unnecessary. But the idea here is that you'll take this on board and we'll come back soon to the community with some ideas that could address the concerns they've raised. So the appeal, Kristoff, is to D Dot and Trey, to Murray, to do that. And I know my fellow commissioners and I will join with you in representing the community on that, on that score. And from here on, continue to engage them as we're doing now to get their views in full. So this was an airing of views for you guys to take this away and come back with some ideas for remediation that we can then present to the community. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, and I would just like to say that, as you mentioned, Murray is completely open to amendments and adjustments that D Dot, when they collect, you know, take all this information and put it together. We're open with that. When we went through this process, Murray is a school relied on the advice of experts that work in traffic calming and the folks from D Dot to put a plan in place. We are open to that being revisited and working. You know, I'm particularly sympathetic to neighbors that need access to certain things on their property. Like, I completely understand that. I think nobody wants it to be unsafe. Everybody wants it to be safe and we want the, Murray wants the best outcome on this.
Very good. And Alisa and Jeff, thank you for staying with us to hear this because obviously the transportation safety part is a condition of the order. So this is important for you to hear and understand the community's concerns. All right, with that, I think we'll bring this to a close. Commissioners, unless there is another commissioner who has a final view you want to express?
Yeah, Bruce, I'd just like to ask the two gentlemen, how are we to get very specific requests from residents about ameliorating some of these, these problems? Moving some posts around or eliminating a couple of posts here and there? How, how, how should we best get those very particular request, citizen requests to you?
Can I offer this one thought? If they take on board everything we've said here tonight, eliminating the flexi post might be on the.
Oh, oh, okay.
Well, I'm not saying they're going to do that. I'm simply saying they're hearing the concerns of the neighbors, right? So what I'd like them to do is take all this on board. And as I just mentioned, that conversations I had about other facilities at the intersection that were previously planned at Utah and Nebraska that then went away, could be reinstated potentially with funding that D Dot already has for buyer retention facilities. There are some things that could possibly come into play here that we haven't, that we can't address right now.
Okay, so nobody wants any detail, no, no one's, no one wants details at this moment. Okay.
Well, I mean, I would say simply this, I think what we look, we're looking at and the neighbors are expecting is a comprehensive solution, not necessarily just removing a flexi post here or there, right?
Yeah, well, I just, I thought that could be done in the meantime, but if, you know, I, I agree with your, your perspective and the way you're doing it. I, that's fine.
So in any event, we will be following up immediately. And that link to the survey with additional comments is still live. It's dynamic. It's updated dynamically. So you'll continue to see people responding to that. But there's a wealth there of comment that I think is very helpful to inform the collective judgment going forward. So thank you, Kristoff. Thank you, Trey. Alisa, Jeff, thank you very much. Neighbors, thank you for your comments. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So up next, Commissioner Nagy, crossing Connecticut Avenue issue. You want to go on?
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm gonna try to keep this short because mostly I want to just raise it and, and deal with it perhaps sort of differently. But a month or so ago, Commissioners Goslin and Simmons had a meeting about the crossings at Livingston and McKinley. And I attended and raised the question of, they also were discussing with the gentleman from D Dot some issues that were in my SMD to a plan to put a traffic light at Jocelyn. And also they addressed an issue in SMD O three. So it occurs to me that Connecticut Avenue is an issue for everyone in this community, not just the three SMDs, which includes mine. And I'd like to see it handled at a larger level than just the three commissioners. Having said that, I have constituents who can't cross the road on the lower part of Connecticut Avenue, but also can't cross at Livingston or McKinley. And also can't cross at Albemarle, which isn't even in our ANC. So I've asked, Kristoff was kind enough to stick around, I hope. I think, yes, there you are. Hi. I just want to put this on the table. I've spoken to Ted Van Houten about it. Not about this particular issue, but about Connecticut Avenue as, as a whole in my SMD. But I would like to see us handle Connecticut Avenue traffic as a commission issue, not just an SMD issue. Because everybody coming through this neighborhood goes, you know, many people go on Connecticut Avenue to get where they're going. So having said that, Peter, what, and Corinthians, what was the outcome of your, your issues on Livingston and?
So it was, so it was legation. So just for the community's awareness, D Dot came to our June meeting to talk about Connecticut Avenue. And that was where D Dot discussed the changes happening to Connecticut Avenue, all along Connecticut Avenue. So the meeting that Peter and I had was set aside for specific issues in our two SMBs. So
And yet you talked about my SMD, Corinthians.
Hang on a minute.
Stop. Don't do that, Peter. I'm, I'm allowed to say that my SMD was encroached on, okay? I would like for this to be handled as, as a whole commission issue. Because it is not just your SMD or mine, for that matter.
Commissioner Nagy, can we let Commissioner Simmons finish with her point?
Oh, I'm finished. I was just letting her know that her request, we had that in June where Kristoff and Ted discussed Connecticut Avenue.
That is not the meeting I was talking about. The meeting I was talking about was a meeting that you had with several constituents just talking about your SMD. And it actually branched out into two other SMDs. So let's just be clear. I'm not talking about the same meeting you're talking about.
Commissioner Goslin? You're on mute.
I, I also want to be clear. Commissioner Simmons and I, in June, this ANC got a briefing on Connecticut Avenue on the latest version of the multimodal plan for Connecticut Avenue. And we all discussed it. Out of that, Commissioner Simmons and I realized that we had a bunch of local issues. Things like the flex posts that try to keep people from parking right beside Starbucks. The issues of traffic calming around the Chevy Chase playground and so on and so forth. So she and I scheduled a Zoom and invited the public. In that meeting, we discussed, and I introduced as ANC's SMD, single member district, specific issues, the ones I raised and the ones Commissioner Simmons raised. And then I said, we also will discuss ANC wide issues. And the question of Connecticut Avenue came up. What so disheartens me about the way it came up is that, in fact, Commissioner Nagy and I have the same concern about adding more lights on, on the stretch from Nebraska to the circle.
No, I don't. I, I don't, Peter. I, I don't know that I agree with that. I don't know that I do have the same concern.
Please let Commissioner Goslin finish.
All I would say, all I would say is that I, I worked hard in framing the issue for this Zoom, which was one that Corinthians and I sponsored. Not to make any claims of ownership to any issue involving Connecticut Avenue. And I think it's a, it's, it, it's a, it's a searching for, you know, a fight to say that I, that, that we made any claims about it. This commission, as recently as June, has discussed as a whole body, the issue of Connecticut Avenue. And we will continue to. So I just, I, I, it's very disheartening.
When we go back and we look at the, the recording, you will not have been talking about SMD O three or SMD O seven in that meeting. Is that right?
No, constituents can bring up issues. You were there.
They didn't bring up SMD O seven, Corinthians, you did. Oh, Peter did, excuse me. Can I, can I just skip past that for right now? Because I don't want to take up Kristoff's time. What I want to really talk about is the fact that constituents can't get across Connecticut Avenue in the time that the light affords. Okay, I have disabled constituents who have complained to me that they're stuck, they're stranded in the road when the light turns and they feel vulnerable, understandably vulnerable. One of them uses a cane, another one uses a walker. I just think that we need to look to address these issues so that people, again, with disabilities don't end up run over on Connecticut Avenue. So Kristoff, could I ask you to comment on whether it's possible to do something about the light timing before the big plan that Ted Van Houten is working on takes effect?
It's a great question. Actually, I would recommend that we just include it as part of the study. So I've shared the comments with Ted and we'll make sure that it's shared with our signals team. See if they can look at, you know, if they can extend the pedestrian crossings at the three intersections you mentioned, I believe McKinley, Livingston, and then Albemarle.
Which I freely admit is not in my SMD or even in this ANC, but it was complained about by my constituent. But is there something that we can do that would happen sooner than when this plan goes through? Because when I talked to Ted about it, the plan is not going to be implemented for a while and then in stages. And meanwhile, you know, meanwhile, these elderly people, as they happen to be elderly, can't get across the street. So can we at least look at getting them some relief before the plan?
Well, typically, what would, this would require is like a traffic safety investigation. And then that would, a traffic safety input would have to be submitted. And I think that I would like to not go through that process and wait for it to get prioritized. So that's why I recommend it going through the study. You know, there's an active study for this intersection and I think it'd be most fitting to to include it with that and, and the more holistic intersection changes that will be coming.
How about if we talked to Ted about it and see whether somehow this can be folded in kind of quickly to this process? Again, these are elderly people. They need, they need the relief now, not in two years, not in three years. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll emphasize the urgency of.
Okay, thanks. Let's be in touch about that, shall we?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for sticking around for this. I really appreciate it.
Of course.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Next up on the agenda, Commissioner Finacy. Um, so this is where you amended and wanted to talk about the, the field and capacity issues.
Correct. Instead of the gazebo, we have seen a little reduction in trash, so maybe people are getting the message, but we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. So can you allow me to share screen?
Yeah, you're co-host, so you should.
I can do that. All right. Let me, let me go ahead and share this. And, all right, and I'll put it in slide mode. Okay. So I, as you may know, we have a project that started this summer on the Lafayette School Field. The adjacent neighbors did not get any notice and neither did the ANC. This project is to install about 400 feet of drains. We had a huge erosion project done last year. I have not been able to get any answers as to why, what these drains will do and why they weren't installed last year, except that they didn't think they were going to fix the track last year. So they wanted to do it at the same time they were doing the track. But what is very concerning is that they are really not being careful with the grounds. They started work without following the tree protection plan. And we had to get urban forestry up there to literally stop the jackhammers from going into their critical root zone of the trees. But now they are damaging our fields. And in the conversation last week, and then I confirmed again this afternoon before this meeting, this is the particularly problematic part, is they have said that they will not repair any damage to the field as a result of the construction. So I have taken some photos. This is our field. This is where trucks have driven out onto the field and dumped gravel on the field. Their intention is to leave it. This one on the right, they've got pallets on the field and you can see where the trucks have been driving on their field. They confirmed today, I'll repeat it, they are not going to fix the damage. Here's another one where they've driven on the field. Let's see. Here is a pile of gravel out there. Going to kill the grass. They're not going to fix it. Here's matting out there far in the distance. Cause I've taken these through the fence, not going out there in the field. That's a big pile of chunks of concrete rubble. This is some kind of tubular thing. Anyway, this mat with the high temperatures that we've had, it kills the grass. And on the, the photo on the right, I was able to reach under the fence and just peel back like five inches. And you can clearly see the area not covered by the mat, the area covered by the mat, and it's already dead. And then these are some more of those tubular things sitting on the beautiful grass. They're not going to fix it. Here is the damage going up into the park from the trucks. So I am just completely appalled. I have seen shoddy workmanship in many contracts with DC Blue Sky. When they had the renovation of the rec center, they left a gravel pathway and they refused to come get it. It was there for three years. I was so afraid the mowers were going to zing into a kid's eye with rocks. And it wasn't until last summer that they paid another contractor to fix it. So shoddy workmanship and, you know, kind of having a punch list, that happens. But I have never heard of a contract where there was known degradation and the plan was to leave it looking like this. This is completely unacceptable. And I think it is, you know, it's deliberate. It's demolition by neglect deliberately. I spoke with DGS today and they said, well, you know, we're going to put Lafayette on the athletic maintenance contract. And I said, yes, but all you're doing is mowing, right? You're not going to aerate, you're not going to reseed, you're not going to resaw it. And they said that was correct. So this is what we've got, and it's only going to get worse. That's the presentation on the field that I have, and I'll be happy to take questions. I'm going to put my thumbnail back up so I can just see who you guys are. And I'm going to turn off the share screen, I think. If I can remember how to get there. Okay. I'm going to stop sharing. Okay. Do you, does anyone have any questions? Pretty helpful, isn't it?
Commissioner Goslin, then Grunwald. Commissioner Goslin, you're on mute.
Yeah, I do have a question, Laura. What, I mean, make an ask of us. I mean, I, I mean, if in fact, DGS is taking the position they're not going to fix this, then we have to object to that and we have to raise it. I don't, I mean, are you, you want to present a resolution to that effect? Do you want to do more research? I, I mean, I'm, yes, it's horrible and, and we ought to respond if in fact that is their position. I mean, what good is it to maintain something that they've already wrecked? So, I mean.
And they're not, and they're not even really going to maintain it. I mean, aerating and reseeding is like taking your kid to the pediatrician and the dentist. It's basic. That's not like going to, you know, Club Med. It's basic stuff.
Make an initial, do you want to propose an initial resolution or an initial request for, I mean, what's your ask?
Let's hear from the rest of the commissioners, because I just, I was really hoping that AFRI had sent them pictures last week that they would reconsider and realize that was crazy when they saw the kind of damage. But when I confirmed this afternoon, that was a hard no. Carol, Grunwald?
Uh, yeah. So Laura, you may have mentioned this, but I apparently have missed it. What are the trucks doing on the, on the field?
Um, so what they are doing, and I haven't been here the whole time because I went to help my mom move in, but they are taking, so they are tearing up the track, as you might be able to see, if I make it a little bigger. Here, they are taking up parts of the track to put in drains and parts of the track that were in bad shape. And in this top left-hand corner, they're making a mountain of rubble there. I don't know where the rubble's going to go. Um, but they haven't given us any plans.
So how, how long, do you know how long it's going to take to fix this track?
Um, well, it was interesting because I contacted DGS because I know that we have historical use by Cap City Little League and they said it would be offline until November. They had already issued the permits to Cap City Little League and they asked that Cap City refile for different permits.
Wow.
And they're scrambling to file permits, so I don't know. Commissioner Gore?
Yeah. So I know you had your conversation with them today, but, you know, I would piggyback on what Commissioner Goslin says. I think you're going to have to put something on the record from the commission. Going back and forth with them, they're doing apparently what they want to do. And we don't have anything officially on the record stating our opposition. That is very, you know, it's very distressing. I don't, I don't like that at all. And our, that grass is going to be dead by the end of the week within a few days. And they've already told us that they're not going to repair the field. So any additional damage is just going to be that additional damage to the field that's going to go unrepaired. And I don't know if you've contacted Councilmember Janice Lewis George's office, but she's Chair of DGS. Got to get her involved and, you know, she's got to stand up and, and help, help us fix this because this is, it's really, really sad, really sad. That field is going downhill extremely fast.
Thank you. Commissioner Sherman?
I would, I would have Hunter, Director Hunter and Councilmember Louis George at our next meeting.
Absolutely.
And I would have them both there and I would put Hunter on the hot seat. And I would say, look, you have just, DGS has just awarded a contract. You've agreed to do a grass field at Hearst. So why aren't you doing one at Chevy Chase? We've asked for it and asked for it and asked for it. And just say, look, you know, this is intolerable. Now, these maintenance issues obviously need to be remediated, addressed right away. But the longer term situation, of course, Commissioner Finacy, you've forgotten more about this than I'm ever going to know. And I commend you for all of your efforts over the years. Your goal is to get a proper grass field installed at Lafayette, and that should be our collective goal. And I think we just have to move forward on that. And I think the Hearst case gives us a precedent to say, well, just down the road, you're able to do this.
Well, it's a little, it's a little bit different in, in that it is, that Hearst field is actually not the school Hearst field. That's a DPR Hearst field, and it's being funded privately by the Friends of Hearst Field.
Okay. Well, let me point out something else. I pass by there almost every day on my neighborhood walk. And this is in your district, Commissioner Goslin. The Chevy Chase field at 41st and Livingston is a field that I pass by every day and in wonderment, look at it and say, we had a deluge of rain the night before. This was yesterday, so go back two days. We had from six to seven, like two inches of rain fell. I go by there the next morning and they didn't have the tarp out the day before. They have a tarp, but the field was totally playable. Why? I went on the field. I walked it. And I see that they've got proper drainage at the bottom of that field. Water runs off into the drains. That field drains very quickly. We've had enormous amounts of rainfall in this neighborhood and here is a, a natural grass field with a, with a dirt infield, obviously, that's playable. So if it's possible in our neighborhood, in our ANC to have another field that is playable, it's grass, it's doable, I point out, I would point that out to Hunter and Janice as well and say, hey, look, what, what's the problem here? I just think let's get them at the next meeting.
Quite taken. I like it. Thank you. Mr. Goslin?
I said, I think that's a great idea. I, I, what if we just passed a simple resolution that says ANC 34G is deeply concerned about what it sees as negligent and deeply damaging work being done at the Lafayette Field and seeks first, some, some, some immediate information and then ask that both the Director of DGS and the Chair of the Council Committee that oversees DGS to attend our July 28th meeting. I mean, it's just as simple as that. Just, we, we, we get it on the record now that, you know, we see this damage and we, and we simultaneously invite them, a hard invite to get here July 28th. Does that, how's that sit with other commissioners?
Line by me. You've got my proxy. Whoever wants to write it, just write it and send it.
Yes. I mean, Peter, I don't, I don't disagree with it. I would maybe make it a little worders, you know, stronger. I mean, there's a lot of history to this field being neglected. Me and Laura had the meeting with the mayor, Director Hunter was there. And this is insult on top of injury to that. So I just think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm back now. Let's, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, strongly worded. I mean, if Laura wants to accept your language and then, you know, work on that, but you know, I agree, we, they've got to come to the table and they've got to face this community and they have got to explain what the hell is going on with this field and why they are taking the stance they're taking. And if that is what they told you today, that is absolutely ridiculous. It is ridiculous.
And, and I did let them, I had them, I asked them again, I stated that I was going to the ANC and I was going to give an update. So I just wanted to confirm. So with the knowledge that I was coming to the ANC, they reiterated that.
Well, we definitely have to put something back to them in writing and what they said, if, if you choose to do a resolution or however you choose to do it, we've got to document what they said. We, we got to keep the record on this open and we got to keep them at the table. And I would not have any excuses from the council member's office as well.
Let me just say, I, I, I mean, I'm happy with any strong language. I, I didn't, I was just trying to suggest that we, we get something on the record.
I agree. I understand.
So, um.
Why don't you draft it, Laura?
Pardon?
Why don't you draft it?
Okay. So this, this is my, this is a procedural question and you can tell it's my first term as a commissioner here. But if I were to draft, can we vote on something that has not been drafted? Or are we voting for me to draft it? Or how does that?
Yes, you can. You can vote on, and what I would do is vote on Commissioner Goslin's wording with the caveat that you will finalize the draft and circulate to the commission for approval. And we've done it a thousand times and it's a perfectly acceptable motion and it will go, you know, that you can absolutely do that.
I'm, I'm going to need, excuse me, for the minutes, the, a very clear statement of what Peter's language is.
Let me try to recap it then. Okay.
And I'll grab it from the transcript, but I need it to be clear so I know what we're voting on.
Okay.
So we all know what we're voting on for that matter.
The motion, the resolution would be for Commissioner Finacy to draft a resolution noting the ANC's deep concern about the damage done to our field by Department of General Services Construction, which they have stated they do not intend to remediate. And the negligence and the, I'd have to tweak the wording. So the damage and the negligence to our field. And the Commissioner Finacy will circulate this draft for approval.
Can, can I, can I suggest an alternative, which is just that ANC 34G is deeply concerned about what it's is sees happening at the Lafayette Field. It, it requests immediate plans, details that it has not been offered about what is, what is entailed in the work. It, it seeks an immediate assurance that any damage to the field will be remediated. And it requests the presence at its July 28th meeting of Director Hunter is his name, DGS, Hunter and Councilmember Louis George. And then a second item that just says, Commissioner Finacy will refine, is authorized to refine the language before sending it. I, I don't think, I, I, I don't think we ought to authorize you to draft language that we then, we can't, we have to approve it at this meeting. I mean, we have to approve the resolution, I think, at this meeting. We can't do it by phone. I think that's, I mean, you, Lisa, you tell me, is that, does that make more?
Yeah, I mean, either way you could do it. I mean, you could, we've done it before where we had, you know, language drafted after the fact. Yeah, I mean, either way you could do it. I mean, you could, we've done it before where we had, you know, language drafted after the fact, where we just said pretty much, you know, the top three bullets that you identified. But I mean, we can accept it as you said it or as Laura said it, whichever way.
Just.
So. I really need for, per Robert's rules, I really need for the motion, the resolution to be clear of what it's going to say. If Laura is happy with what Peter says, I'm happy with that, although I would add the words remediate the field as soon as possible to that, because, you know, you say remediate it, and five years from now, it still won't be remediated. But I would much prefer for the rules that we get straight what we're voting on here.
Okay.
Laura, which do you, are you okay with Commissioner Goslin's friendly amendment?
I think so. I can recap it, but did Commissioner Sherman have a hand raise?
Yeah, so my, my issue is it's remediate with the damage they've done, but give us a, a ball field. Right? In other words, don't just come in and take the rubble that you dumped on the field and spread some grass seed down there. We want a new ball field. That has to be our ask, because what they're doing, if we just have them put a Band-Aid on this, on, on the problem they've created now, that doesn't get us to where we want to go. We want a ball field like the one in Chevy Chase at 41st and Livingston. Why, why can't we have that? What is the problem? Right?
And especially after they spent $2 million last summer.
Yeah, so it's two parts for me. Right, so it's two parts for me. Yes, clean up the mess you've created right now, but then give us a plan for the field. We want to see traction. We want to see a definite plan moving forward to get the field we've asked you for, for years. Okay.
Do we want to give them a timeline?
Let's see if we can get the bullets down, right? ANC 34G is deeply concerned about, about what it sees as destructive behavior by DGS at the Lafayette field. We ask for, we ask immediately for detailed plans of what they intend there, something.
We can say scope of work.
Scope of work, which we have not been provided. We, we, we ask, we insist, we demand, we, what? Request, demand that, point three, we demand that any damage to the facilities be remediated immediately after construction. No, I'm sorry, go, let's put Bruce's point as number three. So deeply concerned, want detailed plans, demand that those plans include a, a new, a state of the art, everybody uses that expression, state of the art ball field.
Grass.
And grass ball field, and that, and then point four is that any damage during construction be remediated immediately after construction, fully remediated after construction. And point five is that we urgently request that Director Hunter and Councilmember Louis George appear at our July 28th meeting. That, did I capture Bruce?
Yeah, that, that's fine. And just, and just to note, Barbara Rogers is on the call, so she's hearing this as we're talking.
Good.
Is she still here?
Yeah.
Yeah, she was, yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that the words blatant disregard might not be, blatant disregard for the community might be handy.
Yep, we see we're deeply concerned about the damage to our field, the years-long negligence of the property and the blatant disregard of our community.
Yeah, somewhere in there, blatant disregard, why not? Just to make the point.
All right. So may I make that motion?
I'd second it.
Yep, you can make it by saying, I so moved.
I so moved.
And Goslin has properly seconded. Commissioners, all those in favors, raise your hand. Okay, that's seven zero.
Thank you. Okay, and now I'll go to my point two, which is an interesting thing. So this is a capacity issue that arose from constituent concerns that I have had, but I don't believe that I'm the only commissioner who has heard from parents. And in some cases, I've had former staff even talking about the school. And things have come up that, about large class sizes, they've come up about overcrowding, about kids eating in cafeterias that weren't designed for cafeterias, that their kids are in windowless classrooms. And we have been trying since April to find out what really is going on. Because I do not work in the school. I see it from the outside, but I do not have inside knowledge. I do have specific knowledge of the plans as they were done for the 2016 renovation and specific knowledge of the 2019 renovation, and which is why I presented in June that it was concerning that it didn't look as if the school had the space to accommodate the students that it's saying it does without significant cuts either to classroom size or loss of multipurpose space. So then I went and looked at where, I did some digging into the DCPS's databases. And they went through in 2022, 2023, which I don't know if, it, it wasn't known to me as a neighbor. I don't know if it came before the ANC at that time. But they basically adjusted the capacity of all the schools citywide. And some schools were found to have capacity less than what had been stated in 21, 22. Some were found to have capacity that was more than what was stated in 21, 22. And Lafayette was found to have 105 more seats. They, they said it can handle 12% more students than it currently has. And that figure went, basically was 100 kids over what the 2019 renovation made it possible to have. I, I dug around, I looked, said, well, maybe the, all the schools renovated in 2016 were like got extra generous spaces, in which case they would have all been found to have excess capacity. No. I'm like, well, maybe it's a thing with, you know, Ward Three or Rock Creek West. No. It was really specific to Lafayette and Law, and to Shepherd. Both of them were given 12% increases in capacity without any changes to the physical plant. And I think this has really big implications for our kids. And, and I think the fact that DCPS is not sharing any data, that they're not giving us a tour. I think, and that the principal, although she said that they have, they're living it fine, she's never disputed the fact that the statements that parents have made about windowless classrooms and the windowless, windows were part of the specs of 2017. And they were part of the 2016 renovation. Natural light was huge. So, but this has implications, not just for our kids now, but for our kids as they, as they go on into Deale and Jackson Reed, which are huge. I've had children, my child just graduated from Jackson Reed. Both of my kids went through Deale. Schools were extremely crowded. When my kids were at Deale, my son took Chinese and he had Mr. Martini, I think, in one area. And then he had to get all the way to Chinese and he had to book it, like he was late almost all the time unless he was running. But he couldn't really run. There were kids who were like triggery. And if you ran into them in the hall, it could be like a fight on the moment. There are a lot of disciplinist incidents at both school, both in number and severity. And I think the overcrowding, you know, it can exacerbate that because you're, you're literally bumping and pushing to get through the buildings to get to where you need to go. Jackson Reed has trailers. Those are, you know, not ideal. They're taking teacher parking space. And I'm just really concerned that this is kind of like an Emperor's New Clothes things, that they're saying we have this capacity. We don't, and our neighborhood kids are going to have substandard conditions, not just now, but going forward. I don't know if Eric Goulet is here. I thought I saw him earlier. He may have dropped off. Oh, he's still here?
I just told him.
Okay, but he's our Ward Three rep, and so, you know, just like to get your, your, y'all's thoughts on this. Sorry.
Eric, you're on mute. So as Laura said, Eric is the Ward Three State Board of Education rep and has done a lot of work and a lot of look at the overcrowding school issue across the ward and to include Lafayette. Eric, can you give your perspective on this? I know we talked on the phone a little bit earlier in the day. And you have some interesting thoughts. Can you piggyback on what Laura said and just give us your perspective as well?
Sure will. Thank you, Lisa, for having me on, and thank you for all the leadership you've done to help the parents on this kindergarten issue. So I want to just personally thank you for that. You've been such an advocate and they really appreciate it a lot. And I want to thank Laura for calling me up this morning and informing me about this issue. It, it is deeply concerning because right now we are the only ward in the city that has no pre-K for any three-year-olds in the city, and some schools still have a waiting list for four-year-olds. So to be told now suddenly that there's extra space at a school like Lafayette when they've been denied the ability to have pre-K three there for years is concerning. And also doesn't mesh with any description I've heard of the school. So I'm interested in working with Laura on this, and certainly from the board perspective, digging into this issue. We were going to look at overcrowding generally in the fall. I now chair the Student Experience and Engagement Committee for the board. So one of the things we were going to look at was getting rid of trailers, looking at the issue of overcrowding and the impact that has on, on students and teachers. So this would be something I, I really look forward to working with Laura on to find out, you know, where these, you know, your supposed formulas are coming from, where they're calculating this additional student capacity, because I don't see it. And if we did have that capacity, it should be used to bring in pre-K, which every other ward of the city enjoys. And only two schools outside of Ward Three don't have, and one of those being Lafayette in Ward Four and then Ross in Ward Two. So it's something I'm excited to work with Laura on, and I'm still learning about the data she gave me today. And I appreciate you emailing that to me, Laura, so thank you. And I look forward to working with you and the commission on this issue.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to take any questions, Lisa, but I know you've, you've had a very lengthy, but, but good meeting. And I agree that I, I can't stand those plastic bowlers either, though. Get rid of the flexi puss. So thank you so much for having me, though.
You're welcome. Commissioner Grunewald?
Yes, I, I didn't know that Mr. Goulet was coming this evening, and I'm very glad he's here. I'm a big fan. And I, I saw several months ago that you wrote a letter, and it was also in your newsletter. It was your feeling that no more development should take place, either, I, I don't remember if it was in Ward Three or Rock Creek West that you said, no more development should take place until a new school is built. And I'd like to know if that is still your position?
Yeah, I mean, for, for me on this, what I'm extremely frustrated about is we just went through a facilities master planning process that we're supposed to come back to every five to 10 years. And there's an obvious problem right now with Ward Three school overcrowding, which extends obviously into Ward Four, particularly with Lafayette. And there was no effort to make any improvements about this at all. Like our students, even though we have alleged universal pre-K in the city, the students in Ward Three have never been able to realize the promise of being able to walk to their neighborhood elementary school to attend pre-K three, like, like students across the city. And, and there's an obvious issue. If teachers raise this issue as being a retention issue, it's hard for students in larger, in, with larger class sizes to be able to learn. So I think the city really needs to make a firm commitment to putting in the school capacity that we know is needed. Before we keep talking about, you know, expanding, you know, additional development, we need to really seriously hear about what the plan is to build the school capacity that we need right now. So, so that is my position, is that we need to go back, revisit the facilities master plan and start looking to see how we get the pre-K that we know is needed and that we reduce class sizes at Jackson Reed in a way that makes sense. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with continuing to work with you on that issue as well.
Thank you. I, I agree 100% with what you said. Thank you.
And if I just may add one last thing, Commissioner, for me, a school is overcrowded by definition if it has trailers and students are learning in trailers. I, I am horrified that some of these trailers, which were meant to be swing space, have now turned into permanent education space. That is insulting to our youth. And then secondly, if, if a school, if an elementary school does not have full pre-K three and pre-K four for inbounder students, it by, by definition is overcrowded, because those are, there was a promise to provide those services across the city, and it's not being met right now. So I look forward to working with the commission on this, and we're going to take this issue up in the fall.
Yeah, your voice is very important on this issue, so I hope you continue to speak out. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Sherman Den Nagy?
Yes, Mr. Goulet, thank you very much for being here. My district borders Commissioner Finacy's, and I've got hundreds of elementary school kids in my SMD. I hear from parents all the time, not only about the fact that they moved to Chevy Chase to send their kids to Lafayette. It was a big draw for them, but that they're worried that their youngest kids, who are not of school age yet, won't have room at Lafayette. The school now at 925, 930 students, whenever there are windowless storage rooms in the basement that are converted to classrooms, that's equivalent to putting a trailer in the ball field at Lafayette, right? And it's not just Lafayette, it's also Jackson Reed and, and Deale, no question. So I am, am all in on this, totally supportive of Commissioner Finacy's work, the commission's work overall, your work to bring greater advocacy to DCPS to, to address this situation. And frankly, I don't even see a conversation happening around it. I don't even see an acknowledgement. It's like, you, you can't address a problem that you don't even acknowledge, right? I don't even see that. You know, if, if the DCPS officials were saying, yes, we're aware of this and we, and we're looking at it, that would be one thing. But to essentially seemingly just invent capacity, I think is just totally inappropriate, and so I'm, I'm, I'm totally on board with this.
Well, I, I appreciate that, and I'll bring, we're going to propose probably a legislative solution to this. So I'll be glad to bring that to the commission in the fall. I mean, one of the things we'd like to look at is getting rid of trailers. That, that should absolutely be a priority, particularly if they're being used for educational space. Like we have that issue at Key Elementary School right now, where there's been trailers there for nearly a decade. And one of them's a special education classroom, and that is just offensive to students that have to learn in these conditions. The trailers eventually smell musty and, and they need to go. And I also appreciate you raising, it's not just exterior trailers, it's that if the interior space isn't appropriate for learning either. That's not appropriate, and you talk about windowless classrooms. That's, that is a huge issue. And it's going to get worse if we continue to try to add more students to a building that's already over capacity.
Here's something I'd like to ask your help on and the commissioners' help on. And this is a conversation that I've already started with Maray. Maray, as you know, has an agreement to purchase the Episcopal Center for Children. They purchased the five-acre field where their athletic facilities are located. And the two acres in the buildings, they have an agreement to purchase. I don't know the status of that, if they've consummated that yet. But in any event, those three buildings that are directly across the street from my house, at the Episcopal Center for Children, are possibly space, renovated space, and there would be some cost associated with this that could address the pre-K through maybe second or third grade or first grade issue at Lafayette. Not all of it, because the buildings aren't big enough, right? But we have potentially, if we could work out an agreement with Maray, and they've expressed an interest in working with nonprofit groups as they look at how to repurpose those buildings. So this is something that I think we as a commission, and with your help, talking to Maray, looking at DCPS, a subsidy that could be provided to renovate the buildings, to have them be properly outfitted for elementary school use. So anyway, that's a solution that I think is readily available if we can just work our way towards it. We have to have vision on that. We have to have coordination to make that happen. So any help you could provide to us on that would also be great.
I, I would love to, and I would offer, I, I know the Chair of the Commission has my cell phone number. If you could just share it with your fellow commissioners, that's the best way to get in touch with me. Just give me a call. And, and let's figure out next steps on it. I'd love to work with you.
Eric, has the Board of Education taken a position on class sizes for different grade levels? Because that is key, like, and I'm a teacher too, folks don't know that, but yeah.
I mean, we only can vote on things that come to us. That's one of the odd things. I mean, we only can vote on things that come to us. That's one of the odd things about the State Board of Education. So we, we can, what I will do is go back and look at the, the positions the board has taken in the past on this. But we can do our own resolutions where we comment on an issue, but like we can't take action on changing education standards unless it comes directly from Ossi. I mean, one thing we're looking at right now is high school graduation requirements, which is going to come over from Ossi. But what we can do is pass a resolution. I am not sure whether a previous iteration of the board has, has passed something on class sizes, but I would be interested to look into that and then get back with you on that. Because I think that dovetails nicely into what we're talking about with the overcrowding issue. And I'd be glad to work with you to get something approved by the board on that issue this fall, because I think it is extremely timely.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have firsthand knowledge of a twenty-eight size second grade class. That's a lot of little ones.
Yeah.
Especially when they're made to go, you know, but late September birthdays.
Well, exactly. Or that they have to, if they have those September birthdays, they don't even get to go to kindergarten at all, which is, that's the thing that we're going to hopefully keep fighting for. We've sent legislation to council on that issue, which I know is all very important to all of you. And we're just hoping council takes action on it by the twenty-eighth. So because we think every kid should be able to go to kindergarten. The board has spoken on that. And we've submitted legislation that I drafted to council. All they need to do is act on it and those kids will be able to go to kindergarten in the fall.
Wow.
Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, thank you. So thank you for, for coming. It's nice to see you again.
I'm glad to be here. Anytime.
Thank you. Oh, don't say that. We'll have you here a lot. Commissioner Fennessey has done an enormous amount of work on this, this issue. And I think everyone on the commission has been following it quite closely. It is, it is actually frustrating, alarming. I'll just leave it at frustrating and alarming that we cannot get any traction with the school to see what they're doing behind the scenes. We get performative statements about everything is fine. And, and everything is clearly not fine. And it's really frustrating to be treated as if you can't see that. So I would just point that out. And I know that's not your word, but I say it anyway, because it's just just ridiculous that they're so opaque about what's happening there. And this is a school. It is everyone's school in this ward, including the school for my SMD. And I know, again, this isn't exactly your bailiwick, but I guess I'd like to just float the idea that it'd be great if people didn't feel compelled to move here to get good education for their children. It's something that came up during the campaign. It was a question that was raised, what do you think about education in the city? And I think the schools should be better throughout the city, not that people shouldn't feel that they can only get a good education for their children in certain wards. A tall order, if there's anything that you're, you know, can take back to the State Board of Education to ameliorate schools throughout the city, so that all children have access to better education. I think that'd be awesome.
Well, I appreciate you raising that. One thing we are, in, in our work plan that we put in for the fall is to take up the issue of school safety and bullying. We've seen improvements to safety in schools, getting to and from school. But, but the issue inside schools has actually gotten slightly worse with, with students reporting bullying and students reporting that they don't feel safe in the school. So that is something that we are going to take very seriously. I, I work with our Student Advisory Committee, which is a group of, of great students that we have. Four of them actually serve as members on our state board. And, and they, they've spoken on this issue before and, and gave us solutions that we're going to then work to send legislation to council on in the fall. Because that is really the number one issue as to why some students feel they need to get an education at, at a different school is they just don't simply feel safe in their school that they're going to. I know there's a myriad of other issues, but that, that is a top one that, that students mention as to why they, they leave their home school. So we'll, I, I would be glad to come back, actually, if, if the chair is interested in the fall and present the work plan and get feedback and get ideas from you on how we may be able to improve it. So if you're well, if you, if you want to have me back in, in the fall, when you come back, I'd love to come present the work plan and talk about the work of the state board that we're doing, particularly in the area of our Student Engagement Committee, which is the one I chair.
That'd be great from my perspective, yeah.
Commissioner Goslin and Grunwald?
Yeah, I, I want to just bring us back to Laura's immediate presentation. Again, I had the same question as before. Do you have a specific ask of us to, to, tonight? Or is this an issue that we should take up? Take Eric Goulet's offer to come back and take up in, in the fall or at some other point?
I have a letter which I will send out to you guys. I just, when I, I wanted, I, I had the thought, I had it almost ready to go, but then I thought, you know, I really should cross-check it against other schools renovated in twenty sixteen to see if, you know, they were overly renovated and, you know, or, and I should cross-check it against, you know, other schools in the ward, just to see if there were any patterns. And there was no discernible pattern. So it seems to be like the Lafayette field, just something special for us. But I will circulate that letter. Do I need to have a resolution to, in order to send you that letter?
Uh, I did not, I don't, I don't think so. Maybe, I, do, do we want to authorize her to send it on behalf of the ANC or do, I mean, a letter sight unseen or, I mean, up to the other commissioners. I, I mean, you don't have to, you know, you can be just authorized to send a letter. What do others think?
Commissioner Grunwald and Nagy?
I've seen Laura's letter and I think it's an excellent letter and I have already said I would sign on to it. But the reason I raised my hand earlier is just to mention that, I'm sorry, I'm changing the subject now. There's a, a question on the chat for Mr. Goulet. Do all of the low-income areas in DC, or do all of the low-income areas in DC have preschool and pre-K? But you can answer that after if you, if you want. I just wanted to make sure that this is.
I'd be, I'd be glad to answer. So I was the council's budget director, working for Vince Gray when we started the, the push for universal pre-K in DC. This is back in two thousand and seven. We passed the bill in two thousand and eight. The goal was to start with Title I schools. Obviously, the need there was the greatest. So we wanted to start with Title I schools. And then we wanted to expand it citywide, every place there was capacity. Now, the third step, which we have not done, and, and it just stopped at that point, was to, if there wasn't space in the physical space in the schools for the pre-K, we were supposed to either expand the school through school modernization or we're supposed to acquire new space to put those two additional grades in. I mean, my boss, Vince, always said to me, he's like, we're going to make sure this isn't preschool anymore. It's going to be part of school. Pre-K three and pre-K four will be school in DC. And it would be school in every neighborhood school. But when we got to Ward three, you know, and then Ross and Lafayette as well, they just stopped. They didn't provide the additional space. They didn't try to modernize those or obtain space for new elementary schools. You know, potentially in the ward that could alleviate the overcrowding at others. And, and so every school outside of Ward three, Lafayette and Ross has pre-K three. Those schools do not have any pre-K three and many still have waiting lists for pre-K four. And what's really concerning right now is DCPS, you know, even though there's been a relationship with private pre-K in the past where those decisions have been trusted on, on issues like academic promotion and having children in the right grades based on the developmental progress of the student. They're now saying they're not going to honor any private school's assessment of a youth. And so if you have a kid who's been held back for, for really severe developmental delays, now DCPS is going to force those children to skip a grade. So we really desperately need pre-K three and pre-K four in our schools too. It's an issue of equity. You know, we, we, you know, there's absolutely no reason other than the space issue that we have not gotten those grades in. And, and they are in all the other wards in the city. The charter schools have them and the public schools have them across DC. It's just where space isn't available. They haven't bothered to take the next promised step, which is to acquire the space that's needed. And I hope that answers the question that was in the chat.
Thank you.
You know, could I again go back to ask Laura if she has a specific ask and if it is to authorize you to write a letter on these issues?
Okay.
And propose it and so that we, I mean, we're deep into our fourth hour here.
Okay, yes. Okay. So then I think my ask would be to authorize me to write a letter to DCPS asking them for documentation of any discussion regarding changing the Lafayette school capacity in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, including any formulas or algorithms that they use for calculating that capacity. And also to provide the information that we've been asking for since April about current building use, square footage, et cetera, windows previously detailed in emails. We've been asking since April fourth. So that, that would be my ask.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. So Commissioner Sherman Den Nagy?
Yeah, I just want to be clear. Commissioner Fennessey, is this letter you're discussing different from the letter that you've already sent around for us to look at that some of us said we'll sign on to?
I, I have, it'll be a little bit different because of the, just knowing that it is only Lafayette that was really singled out for this treatment. Only Lafayette and Shepherd, incidentally, got twelve percent increases.
Okay, so just for the benefit of all the commissioners, you already have in what she's sent around the gist of what we're talking about, right? So it makes.
Yes, yes, yes. And everybody got that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Nagy?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if we couldn't send it around to everyone so that everyone could see what it finally looks like?
Yes.
And we could expedite it so that it doesn't take forever, but I think everyone needs to see what it finally looks like. If it's going to be something from the commission as a whole.
Yeah.
We always do that.
I can do that one and the DGS one tomorrow after I meet with DGS at the field.
How fun will that be? Thank you, Laura.
Commissioner Goslin?
Can I just suggest one, one small addition, which is that you asked for any calculations or algorithms contributing to the Lafayette increase? And whether that differed in any way from those used at any others, at, at, at other schools? Because I mean, what you're implicitly, what you're saying is that we got the short end of the stick here. And so, I mean, if, if they can explain why it differed grand, but it seems to me that you might as well pursue that. And anyways, with that, that's a suggestion.
Yeah, I couldn't find any pattern to the data.
Okay, so, so we, we've got a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Any other discussion commissioners on the motion for the letter? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed?
Hold it. Did Corinthians vote? Oh, I'm sorry.
Six zero one, motion passed. Commissioner, sentence extension. All right. Eric Goulet, thank you. You know, I've always been a big fan of yours. You're a hard trooper. And I, I don't know how you hold it down on social media, but you do.
I, I'm grateful you all had me on tonight. I would love to come back in the fall. And I appreciate all of you for your leadership on these issues and for, for staying up late too here. So thank you for having me on tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you too. And thank you, Commissioner Fennessey. And just before we break up, well, I'll have in the items for the next particular meeting. One of the things I spoke to Eric about is the kindergarten resolution that the State Board of Education passed based on an issue that my constituent had brought up. And Commissioner, her name, Eric, her name just escaped me. Did he go off? Tricia Duncan in Ward three recently did a resolution where their ANC passed in support. So we talked about our ANC doing the same and trying to get other ANC's in, in three to actually port a, pass a supporting resolution, which I'll present for the twenty eighth. So any commissioner announcements? Commissioner Goslin?
No, no, I want to add something for the twenty eighth. That's right.
Oh, we haven't gotten there yet.
Uh, yeah, just a quick announcement or a quick notification. Some of you are probably aware there have been in the last week, another spate of car break-ins, certainly in my neighborhood. I flagged it in my newsletter for everybody, reminding people obviously not to leave things in the car, how to contact the police and so forth. But I think we all need to be mindful of that and encourage our constituents particularly to file police reports. Because as you know, that's the only way the police will stay on top of something when they accumulate data and they see that there is a rise in these incidents. So and also just be on the lookout for what has appeared to be over the last week, sort of another gang coming through the neighborhood.
Yep. Any other commissioner announcements? Okay, Commission Business Treasurers Report?
Hi, yes. Before we move into the treasurer's report to queue, to approve the QFR for Q three, I just want to touch base with Commissioner Grunwald and see if she intends to cash the check that was written to her.
Yes, I, yes, I do. I just haven't been to the bank in a very long time.
Okay, I don't know if your bank offers mobile deposits. I don't know if that could be an option, but it's been past ninety days. Yeah, so it may be an issue of if the bank will still cash the check. And in that order, we'll have to incur a fee to do a stop check. So if you could maybe consider seeing if your bank has mobile option to deposit the check. That would be great.
Okay, I'll, I'll take care of it right away.
Thank you. So then I sent everyone, all the commissioners, the Q, the quarterly report. So our available funds for the quarter was sixty-four thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. We received a deposit and allotment for forty-eight hundred, thirty-four dollars and seventy-seven cent. We incurred a lot of expenses related to the civic core. So we had about eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine expenses for the quarter with our ending balance of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-seven cent. So I moved that we approve the quarterly report.
I second.
Commissioner Nagy, do you have a question on this?
I do. Thank you. I, I was wondering how much the mailers cost?
I think I've sent that over in the transactions. So I'm assuming this eleven, this eleven thousand is probably the cost, but let me pull up the transactions that I sent to everyone.
Thank you.
You should have it in your inbox, but if you look at your inbox on, it was sent a week ago. So we spent about eleven thousand dollars. So we had two thousand dollars for GoVoco, which we didn't use. We had a commissioner reimburse for eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We had another commissioner for three hundred.
Eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars for what, Corinthians?
For what?
Yeah.
For the mailers. We approved that back in April where I sent everyone the receipts. So if you want to see the specific details related to the eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, I forwarded those to everyone in April. And that was, you know, it, it's probably back in the April minutes where we approved everyone's reimbursement, I believe.
I understand.
Reimbursement as well. So if you look at that email I sent last week, you can see all the transactions from April, May and June, if you would like to see those specifics.
Okay, thank you so much.
Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, I was just going to say to Commissioner Nagy, I mean, I think one of those reimbursements was for postcard I sent out to try to get people to the May twenty, the March twenty-ninth, you know.
Disposition, the disposition hearing.
Yes, yes. Everyone had, and, and Commissioner Nagy had business cards. Everyone had mailers.
One, I just had eighteen dollars in business cards, but yeah, I know. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Go on, Commissioner Armstrong.
Oh, so I had moved for us to. Oh, so I had moved for us to approve the Q, the quarterly report for Q3.
And I seconded, so.
Second, right. Any other discussion, commissioners? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Commissioner Grunewald, okay, seven zero.
And then just on the last thing related to the quarterly reports, Commissioner Nagy, if you can upload the meeting minutes to the portal or our OneDrive as soon as possible, after our June 28th meeting, when we approve these minutes, I want to upload everything for the portal, and I will not be doing any commission business for August.
Yes, well, I saw that Dawn Dickerson said not to worry too much about the deadline, but I'll do my level best to get it.
Yeah, August 15th is our deadline.
I know, and I saw that. She said, you wrote her and said, is it going to be a problem if we can't get it in? And then she said, no. So I will still make every effort to get it in on time.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have anything else to say?
No, I intend to meet our August 15th deadline. Thank you.
Commissioner Grunewald?
Yeah, you know, I just thought of something. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to mention this, but I believe we have an April 15 deadline for nominations to the Race Committee, and we're going to be in recess all of August. So we have two weeks where nobody's going to, nobody can do anything about it. So I was going to suggest that we extend that nomination period a couple of weeks, so that we can, you know, everyone can get you know, stuff back from people that we've approached and so on. Because everybody's taking all of August off, right? I mean, the commission's not operating, right? And so if the nominations are due on August 15th, then we've basically lost two weeks of work on that, August 1 through August 15th.
So, hold it, you want to extend it to our first September meeting?
I mean, well, I mean, I, I just extend the I would, hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're listening. Yeah, we can hear you.
I just, I was saying that we should probably extend the time period for accepting nomination, you know, nominations or applications, or whatever you want to call it. Because no one's going to be working for two weeks, that, that, you know, from August 1 to August 15.
No one's going to be working August 1 to August 31.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, yeah, well. We should extend it beyond the August recess, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And I'm not saying it very well, sorry.
Commissioner Simmons, do you have any issues with that?
I decline. I don't, we don't need to extend it. People can still send an email to the commission, and our first meeting, we can vote on the new members.
No, I, I think we should extend the
Well, there, there are two ways that people can, can get out, you know, make, make, okay. People can nominate themselves, and, and that's fine. I suppose they can all write letters and so on while we're in recess, but in other cases, commissioners are going out and trying to, you know, drum up some interest in this. And if they're all on vacation for all of August, or all on recess all of August, they won't be able to do that.
I just think, I think because commissioners' decisions are not planned properly is not a reason to extend it. You, we have had several weeks to reach out to people to join. We have had many people send their interest in.
I have no one from my S and D who's expressed interest in this commission.
We're not required to have a member from
You're supposed to do it as, yes, to the extent practical, practicable, you are required to include
So why haven't you reached out to anyone in your S and D? I'm not required to go
Commissioner Simmons.
Commissioners, we're not going to argue about this. Seriously, if we
Do not mute me, please.
Argue. Well, Carol, you have, I mean, Liz, you've been interrupting folks all night.
Well, I'm just taking after Commissioner Simmons.
We are not going to argue about this, people. Commissioner Simmons, I would ask that you reconsider and just extend the deadline to the first meeting in September. I don't really think it's, it's a major issue. I, I don't It's late, it's 10 o'clock, we've been at this meeting for over four hours.
Closing in on four hours.
Yeah, we're closing in on four hours. I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea. I don't think it's going to hurt the committee or a commissioner. Do you want to read? It's up to you, Commissioner Simmons, but I, I would let you reconsider.
You there?
I'm here. I've already given my opinion. So if you guys want to vote on it, move it forward. I, I gave my opinion.
Commissioner Nagy?
Let's vote on it. I think there's no reason why we shouldn't extend it, and I don't honestly think that it's up to Commissioner Simmons. I think it's, again, a commission issue. Peter, please don't do that.
No, no, I'm agreeing with you. I mean, I want to let's get on with it. I mean, this is
It shouldn't be this big a deal. I don't understand what the problem is. We're not going to do anything with it in August anyway.
Someone, please put a motion on the floor.
Okay, you go, Peter. Go ahead.
You do it, and then I'll, and then I'll second, but I mean
I move that we extend the deadline for raise applications to the first meeting in
September.
September of the ANC.
I second.
Any further discussion from commissioners? Commissioner Grunewald?
No, no, I was, I was, I was voting, but, but I just wanted to, I was voting, but I just wanted to add that it's not a matter of commissioners not having done their work all these past few weeks. It's just that it's a little bit of a hard sell. At least that's what I'm finding. And, and so it's taking a little bit more work than I thought it would to interest people in, in joining this, this group. So, like I said, it's not a matter of, you know.
Commissioner Grunewald, someone from your S and D has already nominated themselves.
Yeah, but, yeah, and so.
Okay, Commissioner Nagy, do you have your hand up for additional comment?
I was, sorry, I was waiting to vote. I apologize.
Okay, commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. Carol, are you voting?
I'm trying to. There, and we go.
Okay, all those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, most, six, one, zero. Commissioner Simmons votes no. Okay, so let's move on. Commissioner Simmons, were you finished with the Treasurer's Report?
Yes.
Okay, so under possible items for July 28, I'm still working on trying to get Chevy Chase Main Street. But it seems like we have some big issues that are coming up that we're going to need to discuss. Also, Commissioner Sherman has the BZA application for 3048 Oliver Street. Potentially civic core update, I always have that on air just in case. We'll have the Chevy Chase Historic Association Grant Application Presentation for the Chevy Chase Day Grant. And Commissioner Goslin, you had the baseball field with
I thought, the, the, Cap Cities Little League has asked that we support their request to either DGS or to DPR to extend the lights, the time the lights, the nightlights are on for the ball field, because they're having to move their games from, among other places, the Lafayette Field. So they've asked, they're asking that the lights be extended from 9:30 to from 9:15 to 10:30. I'm going to write an S and D letter that just says I, as the, the, the district commissioner, support it. But I will be asking the commission to support it July 28th.
The Chevy Chase Field?
Yeah.
That's, that's really late for little kids. Wow.
Keep them busy, keep them busy. And then I will have the kindergarten resolution, so I'll have that to the commission and the community seven days in advance. Anything else, commissioners, that I haven't mentioned that you guys might need for the 7/28 agenda?
Yeah, I might have a grant application for Goods for Good.
Okay. Goods for Good Grant App. Okay.
I had a question. Bruce, are you working with Elizabeth or Sarah on that? Because they've reached out to me too.
Elizabeth, I met with her for like an hour and a half today.
Okay, because I followed up with her via email earlier this week, so good.
And just going to take a comment, two quick community comments, Cal, then Mary Callahan.
Well, it's a little late now. This is the second time, second meeting in a row that you guys, y'all have put up something to vote on and not taken any input from the community. And this time it was, I don't understand why you would run the extension of the race thing all the way up to the next meeting, because you need time to consider the applications and all that. But the idea was just to run it up to the end of August. That's you've already voted, but it, I didn't, I put my hand on while you were discussing it. That's it.
Mary Callahan?
Do we, Lisa, do we have any update on the problem with stealing from lockers at Wilson Reed Pool? I'd like to hear about that, because I think it should be stopped for the safety of the community.
You know what? I will ask Lieutenant O to come on and specifically give us a brief on that. But I haven't received any additional information since he sent that email to us. And I think there was a bunch of questions. I think Commissioner Finacy had offered or asked a couple of questions, and so I don't think we finished the conversation. So let me see if I can get him on the 28th. He usually comes on. He hasn't been on, I think, in the last couple meetings, but he could probably give us an update on that.
Thanks. I hadn't seen anything either. I just think we should close it out.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree. Okay. Anything else, commissioners? All right, time is 10:17, meeting adjourned. Thank you all so much for hanging on. And I am going to stop the recording.